...information, visit hcflgov.net. Be safe, be informed, know your flood zone.
Oh man, here comes Arnie again.
Check this out.
It's up, Arnie.
What are you doing? You made a mess in my hallway.
You don't need superpowers to be a hero. Help make Hillsborough bully-free.
Tampa Bay is like no place else.
Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away.
Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tangle in machinery and can bring sorting efforts to a halt.
No bags.
Trash the bags and keep our recycling program moving forward.
No mommy, no plastic bags.
Do your part to keep our recycling bag-free. Trash the tanglers or return them to participating retailers. For more information, visit TampaBayRecycles.org.
Blasting in the morning is a really great way to keep your teeth healthy and start the day. But when you're through, here's what you do. Throw it in the trash, don't flush it. There's a problem lots of people don't know called sanitary sewer overflow. A condition buried deep in the ground inside a pipe where bed clogs are found. It's a problem we can all help solve. So throw it in the trash, don't flush it. Baby wipe fender just caught in pads. Paper towels, dental floss, clog up bad. Medicines, kitty litter, cotton swabs, hair. Throw 'em in the trash, don't flush it. It just takes a second to do the right thing. So toss it and let's keep our pipes clean. Throw it in the trash, don't flush it. If it's not toilet paper, don't flush it. Even if it says you can, don't flush it. If you're having any doubts, don't flush it. One more time, don't flush it.
This is Dave. Dave doesn't know his home's flood zone and was not able to heed flood warnings. Dave and his home are soaked. This is Noah. Noah is an informed citizen. He was warned in advance about potential flooding in his area. Noah took precautions. Noah is dry.
And I saved the animals, too.
Good job, Noah. When it comes to flood warnings, be like Noah, not like Dave. For more information, visit hcflgov.net. Be safe, be informed, know your flood zone.
Oh man, here comes Arnie again.
Check this out.
It's up, Arnie.
What are you doing? You made a mess in my hallway.
You don't need superpowers to be a hero. Help make Hillsborough bully-free.
Tampa Bay is like no place else.
Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away.
Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tangle in machinery and can bring sorting efforts to a halt.
No bags.
Trash the bags and keep our recycling program moving forward.
No mommy, no plastic bags.
Do your part to keep our recycling bag-free. Trash the tanglers or return them to participating retailers. For more information, visit TampaBayRecycles.org.
Blasting in the morning is a really great way to keep your teeth healthy and start the day. But when you're through, here's what you do. Throw it in the trash, don't flush it. There's a problem lots of people don't know called sanitary sewer overflow. A condition buried deep in the ground inside a pipe where bed clogs are found. It's a problem we can all help solve. So throw it in the trash, don't flush it. Baby wipe fender just caught in pads. Paper towels, dental floss, clog up bad. Medicines, kitty litter, cotton swabs, hair.
Welcome to a meeting of Your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Welcome to the January 14, 2019 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. If you will, please sign and register at the rear of the room if you have any comments. If you wish to address the commission on a specific amendment, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public signing sheet at the back of the room. When addressing the commission, please state your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the commission when recognized by the chairman for a period of three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Powell.
Here.
Dix. Green. Joseph.
Here.
Kress.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Willman.
Thrower.
Here.
Wilds.
Here.
Dickerson.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Thank you, you have a call.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to item number two on the agenda, Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-10.
Good evening, Commissioners. Randy Krancheck, Planning Commission staff. This is Comprehensive Plan Amendment Large Scale in Hillsborough County at Causeway Boulevard and 90th Street. There you see an aerial of the site. Access to Causeway. And it's primarily southwest of Causeway and 90th Street. The amendment is here in the Greater Palm River area. It's in the urban service area. And again, like I said, it's at Causeway just west of 90th Street. You heard an amendment, as I'll get into the Plan Amendment more, you heard an amendment very similar to this just a couple of months ago on the north side of Causeway at 86th Street. So before I go any further, this is an amendment requesting a change in land use from Residential 9, the current future land use, to Residential 20. It's 16.3 acres. The site has some residential structures on it, contains some residential structures. The rest of it is undeveloped. The area is suburban, primarily suburban in scale, but it is transitioning with more development foreseen in the near future. This is a photo looking south from Causeway along 90th Street. So there's your adopted land use, Residential 9. Over here in the red, we have Office Commercial 20, which allows for some fairly intense non-residential uses as well as up to 20 units per acre. Again, you see the Residential 9. And then just to the east over here, we have Community Mixed Use 12. And then just to the east of that, adjacent to that, and up here, we have Urban Mixed Use 20, which also is a fairly intensive plan category for unincorporated Hillsborough. So there you see the request that would take it to 20 units per acre. The request is for up to 20 units per acre, which would allow for the same consideration in density as this urban mixed use over here and the Office Commercial just to the west. Existing land uses. We have a mix of land uses along Causeway Boulevard in general. You can see agricultural and vacant property. You can see industrial property, mixed use. The yellow is single-family. And then your darker browns over here are multifamily. So it's a little bit of everything in this area. It's 16.3 acres. I apologize for the 34.5 shown at the top of this slide. However, the numbers are correct. With 16.3 acres, Residential 9 would currently allow 146 dwelling units. If approved to Residential 20, the development could get up to 326 potential dwelling units. Residential 20 is typically a multifamily type of future land use category. Both plan categories would allow up to 175,000 square feet with differing floor area ratios. However, this site does not meet locational criteria for that type of commercial intensity. So here's a view across, looking north of the site, across Causeway. Here's a view of the site from Causeway. And again, there's that view of 90th Street looking south. This area is in transition, as I explained with the previous amendment request a few months back. Now that water and sewer is available, things are going to start to change out here fairly quickly. So relative to agency reviews, same response we had from the school district as we did on the previous Plan Amendment 18-11 with the same request. Spoto High would tip over capacity with the proposed change in density. Other than that, we had no other agency objections. Our consistency finding is basically it is in the urban service area. And the intent of the future land use element in the comprehensive plan is to direct 80% in new growth into the urban service area. Policy 1613 in the future land use element calls for putting higher densities along major roadways, which Causeway certainly is. It's an arterial roadway. It's a state roadway. It's recently been improved with multi-lane in either direction along with bike lanes and sidewalks. The livable communities element for the Greater Palm River Community Plan calls for the encouragement and support of new infill and redevelopment compatible with the existing community. Calls for the creation of walkable neighborhoods, supporting a housing choice and affordability, and the expansion of transportation choices. Currently, at this time, there is not a transit route on Causeway. The closest transit route is on 78th Street. But of course, Causeway is a prime candidate for transit, especially given really how close Palm River is to downtown Tampa and to Brandon. It's like the hole in the donut between Brandon and downtown Tampa. So the staff recommendation is to find this Plan Amendment 18-10 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant's representative is here as well to make a short presentation, and I believe there are members of the public here.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Good afternoon, I'm Kevin Minier. And let's have a short presentation, right? And I just, what, press the arrow key and it'll work?
Yes.
Okay. Right, the bottom one, right? Okay, thank you. Good evening, I'm Kevin Minier, and I'm assisting in the possible redevelopment of some parcels in the Palm River area. I appreciate Randy and your staff working with us on this project and your staff recommending approval. I'd just like to spend a few minutes and add to Randy's comments. The subject parcels are located on the south side of Causeway Boulevard, a four-lane arterial between 86th and 90th. 86th, 90th, Causeway, and 32nd Avenue define a block of which my client owns or has an option on a majority of the parcels, not counting the northwest quadrant, which is owned by FDOT for a retention pond. The block is isolated in that there's a Tico corridor along the west side, county park along the east side, and there's a very large ditch running along the southern border south of 32nd. Here's the comprehensive plan. Causeway is an intensive commercial and mixed-use corridor with heavy commercial uses to the west, that's the area in red, and large master planned communities to the east. That's the purple UMU and the CMU designations. And that's to the east, northeast, and south of our parcel. And similar to our request, just last month, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved an amendment to a 32-acre parcel to the northeast of us to Res 20. That's the area right up here in dark brown. Randy's map's a little dated. That was approved just last month. Final approval, approved by everybody, unanimous by the Board of County Commissioners. Here's the current zoning map. Our property is adjacent to Pavilion, a large master planned community, which includes single-family, multifamily, and the public shopping center. And another large planned community, the Village of the Crosstown, which is to the north. These are the areas in baby blue. This, oops, that's Pavilion. And this is Villages at Crosstown. 90th Street is expected to become a major intersection with the construction of the villages. In addition, many of our neighbors to the east, west, and north are zone commercial. On both sides of Causeway, these are the areas in red. And they range from heavy auto repair and construction equipment, storage lots, to warehousing and distribution. These are some of our neighbors to the north on the north side of Causeway. All are used for commercial. Here's some other neighbors to the north. Here's a large business park to the west of us on the other side of a Tico power line easement. And to the south of us, there's a large deep ditch, ditch and existing vegetative buffers which completely separate us from the Pavilion community. This ditch ensures that there's no connection, nor can there be any connection between our parcels and Pavilion. Counting this ditch, there's about 75 feet between our southern boundary and the backyard fences of any houses within the Pavilion. And here's a couple of shots showing some of the subject parcels. My clients have been working diligently to try to assemble all the land within this block and now own or have an option on a majority. The nice thing about the county comp plan policies is that if we're able to get more parcels in the future, we can blend those parcels into our project. We consider ourselves part of a larger Causeway Boulevard corridor, one of the gateways to Tampa, and believe that with this amendment, we'll be able to redevelop into a project that reflects the mixed-use categories to the east of us and serve as a transition from the commercial and the industrial to the west. There's also plenty of capacity on Causeway. It operates at a level of Service C. We're also consistent with the comprehensive plan, encouraging infill. We're also consistent with the Palm River Community Plan, which encourages redevelopment where compatible. And the community plan also promotes greater housing choice and affordability, which we can provide. We need the requested density to get enough units to provide for onsite manager, clubhouse, pool, and other amenities. And finally, I need to mention the upgrades to the water and the sewer system that the county paid for and constructed in 2005 to encourage redevelopment in the Palm River area. $5.5 million from the community reinvestment tax was used to upgrade the water and the sewer system in the Causeway right-of-way to encourage new connections. And there's plenty of capacity. So there's plenty of capacity with the road. There's plenty of capacity with the sewer. There's plenty of capacity with the water. So in conclusion, we feel we're consistent, compatible, and infrastructure is in place for development projects for underutilized parcels like us. We're well buffered and screened from offsite residential and can serve as a transition from heavy commercial to industrial uses to the west of us. With that, I can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to public comment. We have Mr. Curtis Foster has signed up. Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Curtis Foster. I live at 3742 Bellwater Boulevard. I live in the Pavilion community. And I'm here to represent not only myself, but my neighbors. It has to do with what he was just talking about. Behind my fence, I have my fence, then we have trees, we have a ditch, and then there's 32nd Avenue, and then there's houses there. One of the reasons that we bought the house is because it was zoned for residential. And now we live there, and now we're hearing that there's going to be apartments put up. There was another area in our neighborhood where it was a vacant lot, and apartments went up. It's one thing if it's a vacant lot and they build apartments. You know, that is what it is. But the problem with when we bought our homes, it was residentially zoned. We figured nobody would ever build there. And now I'm hearing that apartments are going up. So my neighbors and I, we all have a problem with that. So I would like to ask that this not be approved. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Would the applicant like to respond? Please state your name and address.
My name is Alan DeWoon. I live at 3,007 Drake's Landing. I own quite a few parcels, and along with my partner, off of Causeway. We have 8841, which is a corner parcel on 90th and Causeway. The area's been screaming redevelopment for quite some time. The roadway is definitely sufficient for us to be able to do a multifamily project if we see fit there. You know, as far as infringing on any of the Pavilion in any way, shape, or form, we're well buffered between the two. We have plenty of trees back there, 32nd Avenue. I don't feel like we're going to put Pavilion at a disadvantage in any way. As far as transit, it's available there. Across the street, there is a large mixed-use project that's going on, the Crosstown, the Village at the Crosstown, which is about a 3,000 residential project that's there along with 350,000 square feet of retail that's coming to the area. So this area is definitely screaming redevelopment. It needs it. You know, we've invested a lot of time in that area. And we have quite a bit of property out there. We have the property owners along the block that are for this project that we don't really feel it's going to affect anyone in a negative way. I think currently that road sees about 35,000 vehicles a day is where we're going to be at. So we're not coming back on the backside of Falkenburg, which leads to the Pavilion. We're actually accessing off of Causeway Boulevard. So that's all I really got to say. Sorry.
If I could just mention a few other things. The gentleman lives in the Pavilion. The Pavilion's a large mixed-use project with a very large multifamily component. There's a single-family component, a multifamily component, and then the shopping center. So he has multifamily in his project already. When they divided, when they designed the Pavilion, the single-family part, I believe, is gated, and they left quite a significant buffer behind these people's houses. There's a significant tree line. And I can show you the pictures again if you're so interested. There's a very significant ditch. Then there's the road. Then there's the trees on our side. Yeah, there you go, thank you. And so, yeah, there's at least 70 feet just to the beginning of our property, 75, 70, 75 feet. And any sort of rezoning, we will then have to step back further from it. We're going to save all the trees on our southern boundary. We felt it's quite buffered and screened from any sort of single-family. That's really the only single-family that we have anywhere around us. We have multifamily all around us. And we have several very large projects that are approved for multifamily adjacent to us. I can answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Dix?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mine is for staff. If I could ask staff a question here real quick. One of the concerns that I always have is a property such as this that I'll just kind of refer to in generic being T-shaped. In other words, there's very small road frontage and it opens up to large in the back, which would accommodate the density that has been requested. I'm always concerned about entrance and exit, particularly in case of emergency or some sort of, you know, hazard or calamity. And our job, of course, is to come up with a finding of consistency or inconsistency. And there's many things you've alluded to, but I'll just kind of lump them all into quality of life. And quality of life would certainly be a concern if everybody couldn't get out of the property when they needed to. In this case, and I just wanted to be reassured of this, as I look at the map, it looks to me like there is frontage not only on Causeway, but also on 90th for any other potential exits, ingress, or egress. Am I right on that?
Yes. And on 32nd as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question had to do with pretty much the same thing. Randy, what's happening with 90th Street? When it comes down to the southeast corner of this property, it goes west, and is that?
Well, then it becomes 32nd Avenue.
Okay.
Yes.
And it goes over to, does 86 actually come south from Causeway down to this point to meet this?
Yes.
Okay, and it stops right there? It doesn't go further south? 86?
No, because of the Pavilion.
Right, okay. All right. So this project would have access along 90th Street, 32nd, possibly 86, as well as that short little piece of frontage on Causeway?
Yes. And typically, you know, we don't like to get too much into the zoning aspect of it with a land use hearing, but depending upon what the county and emergency medical and fire would want, they may want gated access, non-gated access, whatever, on 90th Street, on 32nd. So those things would be handled through the rezoning, but that potential certainly exists to accommodate those needs.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Dickerson?
So I have a comment. So on my analysis, it does show that Spoto High School, with the reservations that we have on hand now, is over capacity. But for the edification of the board, we do, we will retest at the time of site plan. So we just wanted to give the applicants a heads up that they may not meet the level of service by the time they make it to a site plan. So, but we can offer them any information they need along the way.
Okay. Any additional questions? Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Willman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we find the proposed land use designation change for Hillsborough County Plan Amendment 1810 from Residential 9 to Residential 20 consistent with the comprehensive plan and for the recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Willman, second by Commissioner Green. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move on to...
Commissioner, if I could just have a point of privilege. This is Mr. Krancheck's last meeting with the Planning Commission staff. And so I just wanted to take a moment to mention that to you all. He's had a number of years of service here, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. [applause]. And I've certainly enjoyed working with this Planning Commission very much. Thank you, I've seen a lot of them. Bye-bye.
Congratulations.
Come back and heckle.
Okay, next up is Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-18.
Good evening, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. I'm presenting Future Land Use Map Amendment 1818. This project area is located in the urban service area. It's also within the boundary of the Brandon Community Plan Urban General District. It's on the north side of Bloomingdale, just east of Gonto Lake Road. This is an aerial showing the site as it's developed today. It has scattered housings on large tracts, some agricultural land. But you can see the surrounding area. land, but you can see the surrounding area. There's a diverse mixture of housing. To the north, it's single-family homes on approximately quarter-acre lots. To the west, there's town homes. Further, closer to the intersection is a large target. And on the south side, adjacent to the site, are more town homes. This is a privately initiated amendment, and it's approximately 21.3 acres in size. The applicant's requesting a change from suburban mixed-use six to residential 16. This is an image looking north from Bloomingdale, at the end of Simpson Road, which is on the perimeter, the east perimeter of the project area. You can see it reflects a more rural characteristic in a very suburbanized area. This is looking the opposite direction down that road, just to give you a better sense of how it is today. This is the adopted future land use map, currently showing it's suburban mixed-use six. You can see to the west, there's urban mixed-use 20 and community mixed-use 12. To the south, it's residential six, and then there is residential 16. That's the dark brown. If the proposal were approved, it would show the site as residential 16. Again, it's adjacent to, and in proximity to, town homes. The impacts of this change, currently you can develop approximately 127 dwelling units. It would increase by 341. The maximum square footage is 175 square feet for both land use categories. Now, the suburban mixed-use allows a greater range of more intense uses, such as light industrial, and it may achieve a FAR of .50. If it were changed to residential 16, non-residential development, which exceeds .35, must be residential or office. The proposed change would not allow more intense research corporate park or light industrial uses at a higher FAR. To summarize the impacts, the proposed amendment would allow for additional residential units and square footage while eliminating industrial and commercial intensive uses. The change would de-intensify the allowable uses. Staff reviewed it for consistency with the comprehensive plan, and those policies are listed in your staff report. Generally, the plan calls for higher densities in appropriate areas. It promotes additional infill development in appropriate areas, and it allows for compatible and comparable scale development. It was, it also, because of the increased density, creates a critical mass that might support ridership on a transit system, and implements measures to increase the overall ridership of the transit system. It was distributed for agency review. Similar to Randy's, Spoto High School, the school district noted that Spoto High School does not have adequate capacity, and that at the time of development, they may consider conducting, changing the boundary in order to accommodate additional proposed growth. Planning staff recommends the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough's comprehensive plan. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Good evening. Kami Corbett, for the record. I'm here representing the property owner, East Meridian Property Group. And as Krista said, now I'm gonna need a little coaching here. How exactly do I get this up? Yeah, it needs to, it needs to be. Okay. Apologize for the technical difficulties. Full screen, right. All right, there we go. And this is down arrow, right? Okay. As Krista stated, this is a map amendment to change the future land use category from SMU six to RES16. The purpose of this is to allow for infill multifamily residential development with integrated, vertically integrated, mixed use. As Krista stated, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the Brandon Community Plan, and it's actually consistent with the Brandon corridors and mixed-use pilot project, which I'll talk about in just a little bit. First, I'd like to talk about the developer, Eastern Meridian Property Group. They're a Tampa Bay-based developer. They have experience in all types of infill development, and they have unique experience with urban infill assemblages. And just a little background on how this particular site was selected for a plan amendment. My client monitored the Brandon mixed-use pilot project that I just referenced for a period of two years, and over that time, he met with the Planning Commission staff in an attempt to identify sites that might be appropriate for intensification of residential density along a transit corridor. And then, once the study was complete, and it was consistent with the Brandon Community Plan that showed this as an area appropriate for residential density increases, he approached several different property owners and was able to assemble a tract large enough to accommodate a successful mixed-use multifamily residential property. And we have six parcels with four separate property owners. For those of you who were on the Planning Commission in 2017, you may remember the Brandon corridors and mixed-use center pilot project. This was a joint study with the Planning Commission and the MPO. And this, it was brought before you in October of 17. It went before all of the MPO committees and was brought back to the Planning Commission in December of 17. The purpose and the goal of study was multiple, had multiple goals for the study, but primarily looking at land use and transportation. The part that we were most interested in were the parts identifying sites for redevelopment and identifying sites along transit corridors. These are some maps from that study. This particular map is actually the Brandon Community Plan Character Districts that were adopted in 2010. And you can see the project location is directly within the urban general section of the Brandon Community. This is the site in relation to the intensification studies that were conducted in conjunction with the pilot project. And this area was identified as high-intensity suburban. And then this was the transit density map that had this at 10 to 20. And then you can see on this map, which is the existing bus service, that this site is actually located on an existing transit route. It has access to both local bus service and to express bus service. And also, in the agency comments, Hart has requested that the applicant include a transit stop within the development, and the developer is agreeing to do that. As you can see from this map, this is a broader aerial that shows you the general Brandon community area. The subject site is shaded in green. It may be a little difficult to see, but you can see where we are in relation to the major highways, 301, 75, and where we are along the transit corridor. And Krista touched briefly on the fact that we are actually de-intensifying the land uses that are permitted on this site under existing SMU six. We could do heavier industrial, up to .5 FAR. We think the probably most likely scenario under SMU six would be mixed use, is a 20 acres more, a site that's more than 20 acres. So we required to have the two uses. And we thought the most likely development scenario was office and retail. And we had our transportation engineer run an analysis on the difference in the trip generation between the two, and I'm going to ask him to come up at this time and show you that slide.
Steve Henry, Linkson Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa, 33607. As Corbett had indicated, we had done an analysis to look at what the current SMU six category would allow, which is the office-retail mixed-use, and then also the residential with a retail component. And this gives you a comparison. The green shows the existing trip generation for the SMU six. The blue shows a trip generation for the RES six. We've done the AM and PM peak hour. As you can see, based on the SMU six, the AM peak hour generated about 402 PM peak hour trips, whereas the residential would be about 120 with what's proposed, the RES16. During the PM peak hour, the SMU six would allow up to about 512 trips, whereas the residential would be about 192. So a significant decrease in the amount of traffic that could be generated by the project versus the SMU six versus the RES16. If you've got any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Dix, if we can wait till we let them finish. Thank you.
Okay. At our workshop briefing with the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner White asked us to engage in community outreach early in the process. My client did that. We reached out to the surrounding property owners, but primarily were concerned with any concerns that the residents from Mariposa, which is the single-family development that's located directly to the north. That's a recently approved, fairly recently approved, single-family development. It was approved in 2013 and 2014. We determined through those meetings that we think that we're going to be able to address most of their issues through our PD rezoning process. Things that we've agreed to do are to reduce the stories and the height, maximum height of the buildings along the northern property boundary from four stories to two stories. We're going to double the required buffer from 20 feet in width to 40 feet in width. We're going to be providing one-story garages along the northern property boundary to provide additional screening, and we're going to provide an eight-foot wrought iron fence on the northern property boundary. This is a rendered version of the PD site plan. We are scheduled to submit this PD site plan tomorrow with all of those conditions included in it. You'll see that it's urban infill mixed-use. We will be requesting 337 multifamily units and 2,500 square feet of vertically integrated commercial site. One other thing that we're doing in the PD is that this is Simpson Road, right here, where Krista indicated that it was a substandard road, and it is. Within the PD boundary, we're going to be dedicating 50 feet of right-of-way and expanding Simpson Road and making that a public right-of-way within the PD boundary. We also are going to be providing, we're going to build this road that you see along the perimeter to provide opportunities for potential interconnectivity and provide the founding basis for a street grid as the county moves more towards looking at street grids as properties redevelop. So we're doing that, and we are also going to be including the transit stop, as I stated before, and the project will pay approximately $715,000 in mobility fees. I'd also like to submit to you that even without the PD concessions that were made, and we're very committed to those, and we fully intend to make those, the proposed plan amendment before you is still consistent based on your existing residential 16 land use policies and the required buffers. This particular exhibit shows you that there would be 150 feet between the closest single-family residential building and the multifamily building residential. And then these photographs also show you drone photographs at, both at 10 feet and 45 feet, showing the existing vegetation that's there. This is another drone picture showing, taken at 45 feet in height, showing the existing mature trees that are along that property boundary. And in addition to the property owners that we've spoken to in the north, we have talked to our other surrounding property owners. The green checks indicate letters of support that I have to submit into the record for our file, indicating those who are in support of our development. We also included in that letter of support, we were fortunate enough to earn the support of one of the residents who is, lives closest to our boundary, provided that we make the commitments that we promised to make within the PD. And I'd like to submit those into the record. Just have one copy. In conclusion, we, this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the Brandon Community Plan, which has been in place since 2010, and consistent with the pilot project study that was conducted in 2017, and we respectfully request approval. And we'll here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Okay, thank you. We have a few people who've signed up for public comment. First up, Peter Marion. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Peter Marion. I'm a Realtor with Cali Williams Realty and live at 1222 Carriage Park Drive. I represent Kathy Wiggins and Elaine Bryant, who could not be here because of health issues. They asked me to read their letters from them to you. Dear Planning Commission, I am the owner of a single-family home on four-plus acres at 5910 Simpson Road, Riverview, Florida, 33578. My late husband, Avery Wiggins, has been a citizen of Riverview since 1939. I moved from East Tampa to join my husband in 1962 after marriage in Riverview, Florida. His passing took place in 2008. I, along with my sister-in-law Elaine Bryant, have been trying to sell our homes and land as a single parcel since 2007. During this time, the entire Tampa Bay area includes suburbs such as Riverview, has grown, and as we have watched numerous livestock parcels develop to residential and commercial properties. This includes Winthrop, Bloomingdale Hills, Mariposo, and extra space storage. Sorry, I'm getting over a little cold. There have been several interested parties who met with county requirements, but each investor and developer never finalized the sale of our property due to requirements that the property would not be rezoned. Although devastating to watch the wetlands and pasture cleared, leveled, and developed directly behind our property, we have encouraged it and could help to sell our property. I now find it somewhat surprising to find the residents directly behind me and opposing my rezoning request, especially since Mariposo and extra space storage received approval from, they are both adjacent to my property. I am respectfully asking for the commission to review and rezonate my property as requested. Approval for allow for this county future growth plan. The continual denial will cause hardships for my family and my recent diagnosis of leukemia and current need to take care of my adult handicapped son. Approval of this rezoning request will allow for the younger son to assist with care in our final years, allowing for relocation to another state. As a member of the community for 75 years and a taxpaying citizen, I would like to ask for your consideration for rezoning equally and fairly, as you have others who requested, were awarded rezoning. Respectfully, Mary Kathleen Wiggins.
Tony, can you read the other one? Yeah, my throat bothered me. Sorry. Please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. Tony Tanico, 36181 East Lake Road, Palm Harbor, Florida. This letter is from Mrs. Bryant. She is also a property owner, and that property is subject to this plan amendment. Dear Planning Commission, I am the owner of a single-family home on 2.32 acre property located at 5922 Simpson Road, Riverview, Florida. My late husband, William Bryant, and I have been citizens of Riverview, Florida since 1949. During that time, I have seen Riverview go through many good changes and progress, most recently the area on Bloomingdale Avenue around my property. However, the increase in commercial activity in the surrounding area makes the property undesirable for continued use as a single-family home. Most recently, the property directly to the east of mine, located at 10670 Bloomingdale Avenue, was rezoned and developed as a large extra-space storage facility. I, along with my sister-in-law Kathy Wiggins, have been trying to sell our homes and land as a single parcel since 2007, but have been unable to do so because the zoning for the property is still agricultural. Although there has been some developers/investor interest, no one has been willing to take the risk of rezoning the property. Our property is used to bought beautiful wetlands and pasture to the north, but to our disappointment, that vacant land was sold, cleared, leveled, and developed into a subdivision directly behind our properties, Mariposa. However, we were encouraged by the fact that the development of the property might increase the possibility that someone else might be willing to rezonate our property, and we would finally be able to sell our land. Ironically, it is now those residents in that subdivision who are opposing the rezoning of my property. I'm respectfully asking the commission to review and approve the rezoning for my property to make it compatible with the county's future growth plan along Bloomingdale Avenue and consider the continued hardship it would cause if this was denied. As a taxpaying member of this member of this community for over 70 years, I would ask that you treat my family and I fairly in this matter, so I may live out my golden years comfortably. Thank you for your consideration, Elaine Bryant.
Okay, thank you. Next, Eric Jablon.
Hi, my name is Eric Jablon. My address is 10435 Alcon Blue Drive. I'm a resident, I live direct, a resident of Mariposa. I live directly behind the property. I do support this project based on the agreed plan with the developer. We met several times and came to the following agreement in exchange for support. Only two-story buildings on the north border would be built, garage units placed along the north border, specifically along the northeast and northwest ends, fencing and buffer type as we agreed along the north border. I would like to request that this property and this new apartment complex be gated. While I do approve of this plan, I have concerns about long-term traffic plans with the continued development on Bloomingdale Road. Bloomingdale Road is always ranked in the top percentile for accidents according to the HCSO website. In December of 2018 alone, Bloomingdale Road was ranked fifth, sixth, and seventh in the top accidents per location. I'd like to see a solution to help resolve traffic issues as the reversing land plan was abandoned. Bloomingdale needs help if growth is to continue.
Okay, thank you. Chad Holt?
Hi, my name is Chad Holt. I live at 10443 Alcon Blue Drive in the Mariposa community. I do want to state that Mariposa as a whole has not been supportive of this. There may be a few select members who do, but as a whole community, we have not been organized as a homeowners association given to the people. Right now, our current builder is in charge of our community, and so the people have not given their blessing yet. I just want to readdress what Eric stated, that my concerns, as I live directly, directly in front of where they're going to be building, the traffic density on Bloomingdale is pretty atrocious. There are, as he stated, we are always in the top 20 accidents for Hillsborough County, not only at 301 and Bloomingdale, but additionally at Gorton Lake in Bloomingdale and Providence in Bloomingdale. Now, the property that's going to be built is between Providence and Gorton Lake. So, what this is going to do is intensify, and I don't know what the county has planned to do with the roads, but we either need widening. I propose that we do something about the roads before we continue developing. I know Meritage has built, got approved to build on Providence Lake at the, from Providence and Bloomingdale. So, most roads in Hillsborough County, you can't turn left, so everybody's going to be turning right on Providence to get back on Bloomingdale. So, that's going to be an additional issue. So, just for example, from the accident, the site on Hillsborough about the accidents, just in December alone, 301 in Bloomingdale was ranked fifth in Hillsborough County for accidents. Gorton Lake was ranked sixth. In November, 301 in Bloomingdale was ranked 19th in accidents in Hillsborough. At Providence and Bloomingdale, it's ranked 18th. In October, Bloomingdale and 301 was ranked number one in accidents for Hillsborough County. In September, Bloomingdale and Gorton Lake was number four, Providence was number five. So, we have serious issues with traffic accidents, and we need something done with the road. I'm torn about whether I approve of this building or not. I would prefer the land be utilized more for housing development instead of dense apartment complexes, as I feel that this would maintain the home values. I do have concerns about the nature reserve that's there, that they're going to be building.
Please wrap it up.
Okay. So, I know they're talking about thickening the area, but my concern is, you know, we need more mature trees there, not just planting some small bushes and, you know, small trees. Also, I'm concerned about schooling.
I'm going to have to cut you off. Okay. Thank you. Allison Nguyen? Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Allison Nguyen. I live at 2012 Addaway Drive, Brandon, Florida 33511. I'm a resident of Sterling Ranch, which is just north and adjacent to Mariposa. When I saw the meeting posted on the Nextdoor app by some of my neighbors, I was surprised by the potential future entrance or exit onto Gorton, and that has not been addressed by the developer or anyone else here tonight. So, I'm not sure if that's still part of the proposed plan. However, I would echo traffic concerns along Gorton that turning south from Providence Lake, I live off of, I'm sorry, Providence Ridge, I live off of Providence Ridge, to Gorton heading towards Bloomingdale, it could take you five, six, seven minutes to make a turn, turning left in the middle of the day. And I do that now. I'm on maternity, and I take my daughter over to my mom's baby babysit, and she lives in Villas Serena, and she has these concerns as well. And there was increased traffic when Mariposa was constructed, that it's difficult turning left or right out of her neighborhood as well with the traffic coming out of Mariposa, that she had witnessed two accidents at Gorton and Bloomingdale in December of 2018, one where a pedestrian was hit, one that involved three cars, including one that had flipped over in front of Target. So, she, my husband, myself, and some of the other neighbors who had posted about this meeting on Nextdoor are concerned about this development. I would support single-family development in this area, but I really worry for the added traffic volume that we would see from this, not to mention, of course, what this does for air quality, for the health and safety of bicyclists and pedestrians who are along Gorton and Providence Ridge. I'm a member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the MPO. I have a master's in public health, so health and safety and bike-ped safety are very important to me. So, I ask that you take these concerns into consideration when considering this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak under this item? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Floyd Williams, 10507 Alcon Blue. I'm also in Mariposa. I was excited to be here because look at, see, I have an opportunity to talk to people who make the decision instead of just complaining about it. It's a great thing that the developers did the concessions that they did. My house is right at that spot, and it was concerning when I heard that they were going to build something that'll get rid of the trees that I've spent so much money to have. But with the concessions that they put in place, that I've gotten rid of that worry. But I also have the unique situation to have lived on, right on Bloomingdale at Osprey Run, which is right across from where they intend to put in. And yes, traffic is atrocious in that situation. I did not know, after any attention, to put an outlet at Gorton, that would be difficult for everyone involved. If that can be reconsidered, it'd really be a good idea, because that traffic turn, as was expressed, is very dangerous if you're trying to get up to Bloomingdale, which is what everyone does to get to the highway. So, I don't, not sure what this commission can do about traffic on Bloomingdale. I understand the report that you put together. It makes perfect sense, but it's based on expectations of having businesses with that type of traffic that aren't even there now. So, looking at apples to apples, what you're intending, we'll add more traffic. We understand that. We want to develop. We want more tax base. That tends to be a problem that we have everywhere in the country. So, I guess our answer is to try to see if you guys can work with you guys and try to come up with a better way to ensure better traffic flow on Bloomingdale, and then everyone's happy. I'm not sure how to do that, Traffic Commission, whatever. So, but if you guys can start and talk about how to do that, I think everyone here will approve having good neighbors. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is James Grugger, 10617 Cardera Drive in Riverview, 33578. We have a tough decision until we can find cars that'll get up and fly. We've got a tough decision here. You know, I understand people want to develop their land. I understand developers want to make a lot of money and go to Bahamas, you know. But it is a bad situation on Bloomingdale. We met with Tony Garcia of your staff last Tuesday, and then we had, my wife and I had other things that we had to do in Tampa. We ended up at 8:00 at night on Bloomingdale, and we saw that accident. It was an accident 8:00 at night. A car got T-boned. It was bad. Anyway, there's no way to widen Bloomingdale. The, Tony from the development, he's, they've made concessions. I wish they could make a little bit more concessions, because I think I heard 192 trips a day. If you have 300 people in there, there's not going to be 192 trips on a certain, certain time of day. There's going to be a lot more than that. But I know you have a tough job to do, but, you know, I was against it. The concessions are good for me, but the traffic on Bloomingdale is unbelievable, and if we keep putting traffic on Bloomingdale like that, we've done it on 301 in Bloomingdale. That subdivision went like crazy over there, and it seems that there should be a way that we can get the density down, but that's the problem that we have to look at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please come forward.
My name is Sitom Thomas. I live on 5115 Lithia Springs Road in Lithia, Florida. We own, myself and my wife own a parcel of land on Bloomingdale, about 6.5 acres. I just, I'll make it brief. I just heard that there's a proposal to connect the Sims Road with the Gordo, Gorton, Gorton Lake Road. I just want to know, will that take away some of the traffic problem on Bloomingdale, or is that a strong proposal, or is there any alternative to that?
Yeah, we'll let the applicant speak, and then we'll address it. Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm also a resident of the Mariposa Development. My address is 10449 Alcon Blue Drive, Riverview, Florida. I'm on the fence. I think our team, our residents have done a good job of meeting with the developer. Unfortunately, all aspects of the residents' concerns cannot be resolved in the time period that we've had. We, it'll take a little bit more time. I just wanted to request that the development be thought through in a more of a long-term way, where it's complementary of the residential and the commercial that's at Winthrop, and in some way, we can figure out how to move traffic away from Bloomingdale. I don't know that you can request certain commercial developments within this development or figure out a way of deviating the traffic that's going straight to Bloomingdale. I also have concerns, our neighborhood is filled with young children. Bloomingdale and Gorton are very busy and very fast-moving traffic on both of them, which makes it a very dangerous situation for pedestrians and bikers. I think another resident mentioned that it's important that we make this community safe for young children and elderly and everyone else that already resides there with new developments coming. And so, I just wanted to speak about those issues. Minal Vora? Did I, I did, I think I did. I didn't. Do you need me to spell that? Okay. M-I-N-A-L, last name Vora, V-O-R-A, and resident of Mariposa. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Would the applicant like to respond?
My name's Ernie Hayfley, 11234 McMeldon Road, Riverview, Florida 33569. And I'm on behalf of Paul Savage, who's a property owner of 11.39 acres on Bloomingdale and Simpson. And to whom it may concern, this is a letter he wrote in January 7th. He's out of town. My family and I have owned property in Brandon since 1950s. I've been a real estate broker since 1970, sold many properties in the Bloomingdale and 301 corridor. I personally own three parcels on Kingsview and Simpson Road. Pete Marion, a broker, and I have worked along with staff and have been trying to find the best opportunity to redevelop this area. We have elected to work with a developer who has a great track record of developing and designing projects that are consistent with Hillsborough County's comprehensive plan, compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. He excels in community outreach, and as a result, has been willing to make many major concessions to address concerns for the community. The developer has assured us that his ultimate goal is to work with staff and the community to ensure their project is appropriate. I understand that some of the people are opposed to any more development, period. I also understand people don't like traffic on Bloomingdale. Living in the area, I can assure you Bloomingdale is a fine drive about 95% of the time. Do we expand roads so that during the other 5% time, nobody has to wait in traffic? I think that's unrealistic. Also, I understand it. The developer's project is going to actually reduce the number of trips as compared to what we can currently be generated under the existing land use. The neighborhood to the north has been historically established neighborhood. It was a cow pasture until very recently. This area was established as an appropriate for urban density, long before this community developed. It also seems somewhat unfair to allow newcomers to the area to dictate the future development of my property. The staff planners with Hillsborough County are experienced professionals. They have studied this area numerous times and have determined it as an appropriate area to allow multifamily development. This is, anyway. Okay. Many developers have tried to purchase these properties over the years. After speaking with them and understanding their philosophy, we decided not to work with them. This developer is different. He's been working with staff for nearly two years and has an appropriate project, and he's certainly done that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would applicant like to respond? Oh, we have one other person. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Thomas. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Thomas. We own the land on the...
Please state your address, too.
My address is 5115 Lithia Springs Road, Lithia, Florida 33547. We own the land in front of their proposed development, but the problem is, is there a road that's connecting there to the Gorton Lake? Because we do not, if they take our land for any road, it will affect our property really bad. So, we do not want to sell our land. So, is there any...
We're to get to Commissioner questions after the applicant has a chance to respond. So, at this point, this is just public comment. We're not responding to questions at this point.
Oh, you're not responding. So, but we do have concern about any proper, any future road coming there because it'll cut our land.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll address, go ahead and address that, Kami Corbett, again, for the record, for the applicant. The proposed, any proposed connection from Simpson to Gorton Lake is going to be a subject of the PD rezoning. It's not before you, with respect to the plan amendment. It's not required by the plan amendment. It's something that we have included in our plan amendment based on the policy direction of the pilot project study and some of the feedback that we've been getting from the policymakers, both at the MPO and the Planning Commission, with respect to, one way to alleviate the transportation congestion everybody is talking about is to start to try, try to create interconnectivity and create a street grid. And so, we were offering to do that because we thought it was a policy objective, or we know that it's a policy objective of the Planning Commission and the MPO. There is still plenty of time to continue to discuss with the residents in the area and the PD plan to discuss how that's addressed, but that's not before you hear this evening. Just wanted to quickly address the issue of the Type B buffer. The gentleman made the comment that he wanted to make sure mature trees were put in the buffer, just so he's aware. A Type B buffer requires a row of evergreen shade trees, not less than 10 feet in height at the time of planting, and they have to be no fewer than 20 feet apart from one another. In addition to that, it requires a six-foot row hedge of evergreen that provide, evergreen hedge that provides 70... hedge that provides 75% of opacity at the time of installation. So under your, under the, just the RES 16 development standards, that would be a 20-foot wide buffer with those level of plantings. Under our PD, we are proposing to bring that up to 40 feet to address that. And actually, you know, we understand that transportation's a concern. As we showed, we are de-intensifying the land uses or the potential trip generation by proposing this development. And we're also consistent with the MPO and the Planning Commission's efforts to increase densities on existing transit corridors. This particular site is served today by existing transit. We need to support our transit system, and this plan amendment supports those policies, not that my client has come up with, but that the independent planning studies that have been conducted since 2010 identifying this area as appropriate for intensification. I'm here to answer any questions and I'm happy, you know, again, respectfully request your approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes, I had the same comment as Spoto High School has increasing number of reservations. By the time the applicant makes it to site plan, when we test for the level of service, it may exceed the level of service for high school capacity.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Wilman?
Thank you. I guess just to, I had some of the same concerns about Bloomingdale and seeing that the, based on the staff report, that there's, there are no planned projects on Bloomingdale. There's nothing planned in the corridor preservation plan to try to reserve additional right-of-way in order to do improvements. The Brandon Corridors and Mixed Use Centers Pilot Project didn't appear to review bicycle and pedestrian improvements. So is that something that we can revisit? Not to, you know, hold up the review of this comprehensive plan amendment, but just knowing that this is an issue for Bloomingdale, and it is listed as a high priority bicycle lane in the Hillsborough County's Comprehensive Bicycle Plan. And at this point in time, there's no plan to widen it, so I don't see how a bicycle lane could be added. And that could be a first step. I know there's other issues with safety and just level of service for cars, too, but I think the bicycle and pedestrian issue and safety is, you know, is also very important. And is there a way that we can be working towards making some improvements on Bloomingdale, considering that we are, you know, the additional residential density is appropriate land-use-wise, but transportation-wise, how do we get it to work together?
Okay. Any other questions?
Just to respond to your question about the other types of transportation improvements, the study that was done of the Brandon Corridor Study focused on, in terms of improvement for Bloomingdale Avenue, the improvement that was studied was this concept of a reversible lane. And the resounding feedback that we got from the community was, no, we do not want a reversible lane. What was identified by the consultant as some, was that the community really saw Bloomingdale as more of a boulevard and not just a commuter throughway. And so, yes, I think that does speak to the need to look at the roadway probably through a different lens now than we looked at with that study, based on the fact that what we heard was people liked that there's the Winthrop Development, other commercial that's more mom and pop along Bloomingdale. They want to foster the ability to walk to some of those places. That wasn't the initial thrust of what we asked the consultant to look at in that study. They did identify, the consultant did identify that there was the opportunity for some intersection improvements to improve the flow of traffic and, in particular, this end of Bloomingdale, that DOT was going to be studying the I-75, 301 in Bloomingdale. It all sort of converges right there. And studying how to better get the traffic onto 75, and that turns into the crosstown there. There's a lot of things happening there. And so that was one of the short-term recommendations to improve the flow of traffic on Bloomingdale. But yes, absolutely, we can talk with the MPO and the county staff about how to begin to look at the pedestrian and bicycle improvements as a follow-up to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we find the plan amendment, HCCPA 18-18, consistent with the future of Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Incorporated for Hillsborough County.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Powell, seconded by Commissioner Doughty. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are going to move on to Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-19.
I am here to present to you HCCPA 18-19, a proposed map amendment to the future land use map. The proposed map amendment is located within the southern portion of Hillsborough County, specifically along 33rd Street Southeast and south of College Avenue. The site is located within the urban service area, as well as located within the limits of the Ruskin Community Planning Area. Here is an aerial of the site. We are, this aerial is looking north. The site is marked with the yellow star. Here's another aerial of the site closer in. To give you some context of the area, we have College Avenue, which is north of the site, Interstate 75 east of the site, 33rd Street Southeast, along the eastern portion of the site here. The site is currently vacant. Some of the land uses in the area include a large shopping center north of the site. Across College Avenue, we have Ruskin Inn here and a gas station further west. And along 33rd Street Southeast is a pocket of residential. And this is a privately initiated plan amendment, small in scale at approximately five acres. And the request for you, before you this evening is to change the future land use designation from suburban mixed-use six to community mixed-use 12. Here is, again, Ruskin Inn is west of the site, looking west. Again, that large shopping center that is north of the site, across College Avenue. Currently, the future land use designation of the site is suburban mixed-use six. Other future land use designations in the area are community mixed-use 12 here. And again, the request before you this evening is to change the future land use designation to community mixed-use 12. Impacts from the proposed change, currently, up to 30 units could be built on the site. As far as non-residential entitlements, up into potential of over 54,000 square feet of non-residential entitlements could be built. If approved, up to 60 units could be built for non-residential entitlements, up into potential of over 109,000 square feet of non-residential entitlements. So basically, the increase would be for both residential as well as non-residential. Also, with this proposed change, with the CMU 12, locational criteria would not, the site would not have to meet locational criteria. The proposed change is consistent with the following policies and objectives. Objective 34 speaks to urban level intensity should be built along, like Interstate 75. There's also goals as well as objectives that speak to compatibility. Goal seven, as well as objective 12-1 of the community design component of the future land use element. Again, this proposed development would also be consistent with the Ruskin Community Plan, which speaks to development along College Avenue. It envisions commercial as well as residential and office uses along College Avenue. There were no objections from the proposed future land use designation change. However, the school board did comment that at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, adequate capacity, there is not adequate capacity at this time, but a new elementary as well as high school are planned to give some relief to that. And based on those considerations, Planning Commission staff recommends that HCCPA 18-19 be found consistent with the future of Hillsborough goals, objectives, and policies.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Hello, my name is David Wright of TSP Companies. My address is PO Box 1016, Tampa, Florida, 33601. I'm the applicant for CPA 18-19, which is a privately initiated application for a minor amendment to the comprehensive plan for the property located at 711 Southeast 33rd Street in Ruskin. Subject property is currently within the SMU 6 future land use category, and the request is changed to the CMU 12 future land use category. That is currently located immediately to the east of the subject property across Southeast 33rd Street. Subject property is currently vacant. Existing land uses in the surrounding vicinity include light commercial to the west and north, scattered existing single-family to the south and southwest, and multifamily to the southeast and southwest. The subject property is located within the urban service area, making the request consistent with objective one of the comprehensive plan, which directs new growth to occur within the urban service area. Further, the proposed amendment is supported by the purpose of the urban service area boundary, as described in the comprehensive plan, as a designated area for the location for urban level development in the county and to serve as a means to provide efficient use of land and public and private investment and to contain urban sprawl. Subject property is currently in the process of a major modification to the existing plan development zoning that is requesting to reduce the approved square footage of a resident, excuse me, a restaurant, and to increase the approved square footage of hotels to allow up to two hotels to be developed on the subject property. The subject property is located within the Ruskin Community Plan, which does not allow a flex of adjacent future land uses. Therefore, a minor amendment to the comprehensive plan is required to accomplish our request. The requested plan amendment does not conflict with the adopted vision for the Ruskin Community and is consistent with objective 18 and policy 18.1 of the future land use element. The Ruskin Community Plan goals support well-designed developments and recommends a design overlay for College Avenue. Therefore, the CMU 12 future land use designation is appropriate as it promotes integrated site plans and prohibits strip development by requiring rezoning to occur by an approval of a plan development. The existing SMU 6 future land use designation of the subject property provides for a .25 floor area ratio, which would allow for the development of up to 54,000 square feet of commercial uses on the subject property. If approved, the conversion to CMU 12 would result in a .5 FAR, which would allow for up to 109,000 square feet of commercial uses to be developed. The proposed hotels are intended to serve the surrounding land uses, specifically the South Shore Corporate Park, which is located one half-mile north of the subject property and is home to the Amazon Procurement Center, Ruskin Campus of the Hillsborough Community College, and Leonard High School, with overall entitlements that include approximately 2,866 residential units, 5 million, over 5,500,000 square feet of research corporate park and light industrial, almost 200,000 square feet of general commercial, and over 400,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial, and 118 acres of educational facilities. There are also additional plan development, commercial, and public facilities on the north side of State Road 674 that feed down to the intersection of State Road 674 and I-75 from Southeast 30th and Southeast 24th Streets. The proposed comp plan amendment is located at the southwest quadrant of the State Road 674 and I-75 interchange, which already has portions planned and zoned for compatible intensity and land uses utilizing the I-75 interchange. Future land use element, objective 34 encourages urban level intensities with mixed-use development patterns within the Interstate 75 corridor. Planning Commission staff has determined the request to be consistent with and to further the objectives of the comprehensive plan. We noticed the surrounding property owners and neighbors, neighborhood associations, and have not been contacted by anyone who objects to the request. Based on the submitted documentation, staff's recommendation, and my testimony, I respectfully request your recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone want to speak under public comment on this item? Okay, new public comment. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Dickerson?
Again, a comment. So Cypress Creek Elementary, Shields Middle, and Leonard High serve this development. Currently, Cypress Creek is at 89, but with the reservations we have on our concurrency books, it's at 143%. Shields, 102 right now, and then 152 with reservations. And Leonard, 125 right now, with 162% utilization with our reservations. So the situation now, we are building, planning to build Elementary D in 2020, so that may help alleviate Cypress Creek. And then with Leonard High School, we're building TTT, which is also opening the same year, 2020, to help alleviate Leonard High School. However, we don't have a solution for the middle school capacity at this point, so we just wanted to go on the record that at the time of site plan, we'll have to work with the applicant if it does not meet the level of service.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No further questions? Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Marina?
I move that we find the proposed land use designation for Hillsborough County Plan Amendment, HCCPA 18-19, from suburban mixed-use six to community mixed-use 12 on five acres, consistent with the future Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for and incorporate Hillsborough County, and forward this recommendation to Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Marina, seconded by Commissioner Green. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-21 text amendment. Full of energy yet, I hope. Pedro Parr with the Planning Commission. I have before you Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1821, which is a text amendment to add a new future land use category entitled Innovation Corridor Mixed Use 35. We do have representatives from the applicant with us tonight. I'm going to start out by giving a little background. So this is a privately initiated amendment, but Planning Commission staff has continuously worked with the applicant. We have worked with the applicant since the last briefing to restructure the text as it was first presented. It was presented as a strike-through and underlined from the, from an existing plan category, and it indeed is not that. It is a completely new plan category. So in your packet today, all of the text was underlined as new text. It is related to Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1822, which is the map amendment which will follow. The context of the plan category is that it is related to the University of South Florida main campus, primarily because it is defined in the comprehensive plan as one of three regional activity centers, which are defined as major employment centers. So in the city of Tampa, we have West Shore, and we have the downtown. In this case, we have the university that has a large number of medical and research facilities that have continued to grow over the last decade. And the owners of the, and applicants on the university mall are looking at providing a incentive kind of development that will address bringing that to a reality around the regional activity center as an employment center and as it speaks to medical research and other research projects. So I'm going to walk through what the components of the plan category are. And it will allow up to a maximum of 35 dwelling units per gross acre and a FAR of two. It will allow resident. It will allow residential to be determined by either the density or the floor area ratio, whichever is more beneficial to the development. Density bonuses and credits as defined in the plan are still something that can be applied for as development occurs. There is no minimum lot size defined. Typical uses, again, when we relate them to the university areas and activity center and the medical uses, the typical uses are residential, regional scale, retail, commercial, office, and business park uses, biomedical research, institutional, hospitals, research corporate park uses, light industrial, multipurpose, and cluster residential and/or mixed-use projects. And it also addresses that they still will need to be consistent with the policies and objectives of objective 19, except for the acreage thresholds. So objective 19 is basically speaks to that all development in mixed-use categories shall be integrated and interconnected with one another. The specific intent of this plan category is to form regional activity centers incorporating internal road systems, to foster opportunities for live, work, and play developments. To, it's to be applied along segments of major corridors within one and a half miles of the University of South Florida and its main campus, University of South Florida main campus. That as it's applied, that it should be surrounded by other urban level categories and that it be located along fixed guide rail and major transit lines. I would tell you that the fixed guideway has not been realized in the community plan, but it has been identified as one of the guiding principles for transit, multimodal and transit. And the development shall reflect elements of the mixed-use design. So the elements of mixed-use design that we're talking about are pedestrian, bicycle, and roadway connectivity, horizontal and/or vertical integration of uses, pedestrian-oriented and walkable, and that the roadway corridor, that they convey a roadway corridor sensitivity It's also intended that retail, commercial uses cluster, that retail and commercial uses be clustered at arterial and collector intersections or integrated as part of the mixed-use campus mall or accommodation thereof. Non-residential strip development is prohibited, and it requires a planned unit zoning process. In addition to the text for the plan category itself, we will need to modify policy 8.5 and Table of Residential Uses in the Future Land Use Element, and in the Housing Element, a table that will allow density and intensity increases for the provision of affordable housing to recognize this new category. Staff reviewed this application for a new plan category and felt that in the future land use element, that it did support those urban service area policies, policy 1.7, 1.4 and 1.7, the talk to compatibility and incentives that encourage the development inside the USA, the retention, the relationship to the concept plan, the comprehensive plan under policy 6.2, which is to recognize as an employment area and an activity center under the community development and land use policies 16.2, 16.3, that speak to the transition of intensities between land uses for new development, the integration of adjacent land uses, and placement along transit corridors. Under the mixed-use and land use categories, objective 19 and policy 19.2, again, that talk about the integration and interconnectivity of the developments. We already spoke to the activity centers, objective 40, and the fixed guideway transit, objective 54. In the transportation element, it also addresses objective 1.5 that speaks to development related to multimodal and transit corridors. There were no objections in the agency reviews. And the recommendation of planning staff is that comprehensive plan amendment 1821 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. And that's my presentation. Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Vin Marchetti for the record, 401 East Jackson Streets, 32100 Tampa, representing the owner and developer of the university mall site, 83 acres in total, just north of Fowler Avenue, RD Management. We did file both applications, this application for the new plan category as well as the next one, which overlays the plan category onto the property in question. With me tonight is Chris Bowen of RD Management, who will speak to this application. Also, David Smith is our land planner. He'll be speaking to the second application this evening. We also have our civil and traffic engineers here tonight to answer any questions you may have if they come up. Staff has done an excellent job working with us, really appreciate that. Pedro, Tony, and others, Melissa have worked extensively. It's a big project, 83 acres, but also incorporating the concerns and questions and comments and all the meetings that Chris Bowen has had and others with respect to the corridor in question, and you've worked with USF and the Innovation Alliance property owners. Let me have Chris explain to the commission this evening the vision for the property, which the plan amendment was based upon, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Vin. I'm Chris Bowen, RD Management, 2200 East Fowler Avenue, Tampa, for the record. Thank you for hearing us on this proposed plan amendment, development plan amendment this evening. Our property is approximately an 84-acre site, is located adjacent to the main campus of the University of South Florida, one of the largest public universities in the nation, which continues to rapidly grow in both size and sophistication. Interestingly, an interesting port on that is it's not just the university, it's the medical district. We're located within the epicenter of one of the largest medical districts in the state. As a medical and biosciences real estate developer working throughout the nation for the past 25 years, I can tell you that this is a very unique dynamic for a large retail tract to be part of. I have never seen anything quite like it in terms of a large-scale academic, medical, and technology hive, basically, with the ability to custom-design and develop an adjacent mixed-use companion city center, scaled at nearly 100 acres, with the capacity to develop several million square feet within a walkable urban neighborhood focused on cutting-edge research. The business model for our development is aimed at global, is aimed at going from concept to commercialization via the creation of a high-powered technology transfer engine, not unlike what medical and tech research parks of the past and present have tried to do. However, rather than mounting this specialized engine in a solo-use suburban office chassis, our chassis will deliver the same research facility development capacity with the added benefit of being integrated with an amenity-rich urban neighborhood ecosystem. We believe this is the future of R&amp;D, and there are many examples now starting to crop out, crop up in major tech clusters throughout the nation. Basically, we have a wonderful opportunity to develop a robust research environment within a live-work-play framework that will be capable of fully exploring new concepts and technologies coming from scientific as well as social and community development perspectives. A place where the arts and daily life can be explored as much as and in tandem with exploring fascinating concepts and technologies. Companion to our development on a local and regional level is a major focus in bringing key pieces of international and national players into our innovation hub, especially for medical and biosciences. Having the mix of uses, the flexibility, and the development capacity this land planning designation provides is critical to facilitating and supporting the creation of meaningful and high-profile projects that solve real-world issues in real time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. David Smith, would you like to speak? You're right. Okay. Ron Weaver. No? Any other public comment on this item? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Wilman?
I have a few questions. I'm not sure if it's appropriate for staff or the applicant to address, but, and I'm focusing on the table that is the, since this is going to be the primary direction that's being added to the comp plan, there are no other policies. There's a few policies amended, but I think maybe two. I guess my first question kind of related to that is, it says, under typical uses, projects developed will be generally consistent with the policies of objective 19, with the exception of the acreage threshold. So why generally, and why are we wanting to accept the acreage threshold that would, I think, apply to the concept of incorporating internal road systems and building clustering and mixing of uses that's listed on the specific intent of the category? So trying to understand why we're not requiring a minimum acreage threshold and why all the policies in objective 19 can't be followed in this.
I don't think that the, in 19, that they're provided as a checklist. Instead, they're defined as certain components that should be present, and so there's no exact measure for some of the aspects in the policies, but provided together, they're presented to be a measure against what that compatibility is.
Just as a follow-up to that, looking at policy 19.1, the first bullet talks about requirements for two land uses will apply to properties 10 acres or greater. In the RMU 35, UMU 20, CMU 12 categories, is there a reason why ICMU 35 could not be added to that? Since it's talking about mixed uses and making sure that that's one of the whole purposes of the category, right?
It certainly could be. The, I guess my understanding was that the threshold not applying, and the applicant may want to clarify this, meant that we would be looking at mixed use on any size piece of property. Whereas what the policy says is that it would be 10 acres or greater, so if somebody came in with a five-acre piece under this land use category, we'd be looking for them to be providing, meeting the intent of 19.1. Whereas if you put it with the 10-acre threshold, we would not.
Okay. Well, what, so I guess then, how will it be measured, if objective 19 is being met? I guess I'm just concerned about the word generally and just to understand what then the, how the mixed use, I mean, and thinking about other sites, you know, like because this is supposed to be applied to other sites as well, the language is just kind of loose, and I'm just trying to understand if we're okay with that.
I mean, you would have to ask the applicant whether they would be okay with striking the word generally, but I can tell you how we apply 19.1 in other cases. If it is applying, we look at either 10 percent of the total building square footage being for a second use, or if they are in an area where within, I believe, now I'm, sorry, I'm looking down on the phone, within a half-mile on the same side of the road, there's another use that can meet that requirement, and it's walkable, there's pedestrian amenities, it's integrated with it, then, I apologize, that's within a quarter-mile. Phone's too little. Then they don't have to meet it on-site. So if it was a 10-acre residential piece of property and next door there was an office use that was easily walked to, had the ability to walk to and be considered integrated with, then we would say that they've met the intent of 19.1. But it would be up to the applicant if they're comfortable with the removal of generally.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily asking for the removal of generally, I'm just trying to understand what the concern was there of not being able to meet that.
Well, David Smith, 401 East Jackson Street, Director of Development and Zoning for Sterns Weaver Miller. When we were working with staff on this concept, it really was a dialogue on whether or not that was applicable to this type of category, since we're eliminating, you know, basically giving us the ability to have FAR, the acreage at that point in time almost becomes less important, because when you have a minimum size for mixed use under the other policies, unless you go vertically-integrated, residential development eats up acres. So you would eat up a lot of your project acreage in a mixed-use project, including residential, unless you're ready to vertically integrate it. So in our particular case, one, for the applicant, we have 100 acres. So it's not going to matter to us if that is included, but it didn't seem like it was necessary for this category utilizing the FAR component and its limitation to be within a mile and a half of USF. We didn't want to preclude the opportunity for a very good mixed-use project on a smaller footprint from being able to take advantage of this category if it was deemed appropriate to be located there. So we have no problem if you wanted to put, you know, say it all applies, we're still going to have a mixed-use project, we have the acreage to do it, but from a general category perspective, I think the dialogue was, it seemed more restrictive to include it for this category, since it's limited in where it can go.
I mean, it possibly could be the trust addressed simply as just by, because I don't see, and maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see in the table how it, if it requires two or more uses or some other, because that's where objective 19 applies, the number of uses and how that.
Yeah, the general policies under the mixed use require you to achieve at least two more uses for mixed use, and then it gives you the opportunities to get bump-ups and density bonuses for other incorporation of three uses, vertically integrating them and the like. So we have, we have no objection relative to the acreage if you want to put it back in, but we're not sure that it necessarily matters for our project for sure, and whether or not that would hamstring other opportunities, since there's a lot, we have the biggest property in the area that's available for development. A lot of other small parcels exist out there that might take advantage of it, but we have no objection if you wanted to add that in.
I don't think it needs to be added. I think maybe it could just be a simple adding some requirement for a minimum of two land uses, just to make sure that by saying generally consistent with objective 19, we are not opening up the door to somebody saying, well, objective 19 says, well, we're requiring a minimum of two land uses, but to be generally consistent will, does it apply?
To be consistent with the 19, 19.1 with the exception of the acreage?
That, that would be, I think, appropriate.
So if we look at the second paragraph of typical uses, the applicant has proposed adding at the end of that sentence, "Projects developed will be generally consistent with the policies of objective 19, with the exception of acreage thresholds still requiring two uses."
Two or more.
Two or more. Okay.
So it's there.
We want to make sure everybody gets a chance to ask a question before we get to a motion, so you can keep that in mind if you want to make a motion in a little bit to include that.
I have some more questions, but if somebody else wants to.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
And I apologize, but since this has changed a lot since the briefing, I just want to make sure that we've considered every aspect of this. Under the maximum floor area ratio or square feet, I, you know, we have this second paragraph regarding properties located within a half-mile of the fixed guideway transit station. I wanted to ask if it might be appropriate to also have a provision in there for incorporating future transit station areas or transit service within the site, because this is, you know, if we're going to be truly promoting transit with this land use category, it would make sense then to have that be a part of. it would make sense then to have that be a part of this guidance in terms of providing future transit station. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I understand your question. During the zoning process, the, the policies relative to PDs in these categories requires us to accommodate transit, to have a hub, transit hub in location for this, this scale project. So, as part of that normal review and the PD and the integration, there will be accommodation for, you know, mass transit facilities to be located. Since there's no real planned fixed guideway or, or other, I mean, we, we'd love it if the train was right across the street and, you know, we try to figure a way to get a bridge over there to get to it, but there, you know, I, I don't know that the extent of it that we would have would be appropriate in the plan category, because if we put it in there, every plan category, an acres smaller, having a transit hub may be an issue. But during the zoning process, you know, we clearly have to accommodate transit facilities.
On the site?
On the property.
On the property?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm comfortable with that. The last column, specific intent of category, the identification of segments for those major corridors, to be more specific, would it be possible to add a reference to the Hillsborough County's local functional classification map that specifies the arterials and collectors, the county and state roads that it would apply to?
And David Smith, so I can get him. I think that, right now, all the classifications of the roads are regulated by those maps. I think those are known corridors in the area. In other words, around USF, you have the corridor that's been identified, what Fowler Corridor, the Fletcher Corridor, Bruce B. Downs, and 56. Those are essentially the major corridors that we're, we're talking about. There are no major, other major thoroughfares around USF within that mile and a half ratio.
I'm asking because the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan does not have a definition for major corridors. And if this is going to apply anywhere within the 1.5 miles, I think it's important to specify which corridors that would actually apply to if somebody else wants to come in and ask for that comp plan category.
Let us, let us talk to our transportation consultant, because he's much more familiar with the, all the plan policies related to those type of major corridors.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, this is Christopher Hatton with Kimley Horn &amp; Associates.
Hi.
So, you're asking just to be able to show them on our map as, no?
No, my question is, on the, on the table where it talks about specific intent of category and it says, "The category shall be made available along segments of those major corridors within 1.5 miles." I'm asking, can that be?
Defined as what?
Defined or specified as those shown on the Hillsborough County local functional classification map, to give it a definition? Because right now, major corridors means, can mean different things if it's not specifically defined.
Are you looking for a reference to the, the, because right now in the comprehensive plan, there is map, there is a map to be. It is the local functional classification map. So, that's what planners would go to look at to see if they, if these were major corridors. Pedro, please. So, it's already in place, it's already something that is going to be looked at. It's part of the comprehensive plan. The original map that you were talking about with the development services is on the regulatory side. So, they would be looking at that if, when they were looking at, at existing development review processes.
I've, tonight, I've only been talking about the local functional classification map. So, I.
The applicant says that we, we could add a reference in parentheses, referencing that map without a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You have more?
One last item. The second paragraph of the specific intent of category says, "Development should reflect elements of mixed use design such as." I'm, I guess I'll ask, can it be changed to, "Development shall reflect elements of mixed use design"?
The age-old planning question, should or shall? The, I, I think the only concern is, is then when, when you put should incorporating every one of them, are these all-inclusive? If we're just saying should include these, or shall include these, you know, at the, I guess, expense of others that may be incorporated? I'm not sure it matters for, again, our project. It might matter for projects that are much smaller in size, that may not be able to incorporate all of them and still be a mixed use project meeting the intent of the category. I'm not sure we have a, a concern then? Okay, let me give us one second. And we can come back with an answer to that. Do you have another question?
No, that's it, actually. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just, I, I think I, I know where Commissioner Willman was headed with, with the question about the, the corridor designation, because that was, that was one of my, 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 my questions also. This land use category is new, it's just being created. And it has, in the title, corridor. But when I looked at both of these, this one and the, the following comp plan amendment, let's say, I was a little bit curious as to whether or not we're going to, at some point, designate the corridor itself or the corridors that are spoken about within one and a half miles of the university. As Duane mentioned, of course, there's, there's only the three, you know, the three major ones. But, but I was curious as to whether or not we would, we would actually designate the corridors themselves as well. I understand what this comp plan amendment is trying to do. I don't have any problems with that, I'm, I'm in full support of it. But I just wanted some clarification on that land use designation and where it's, where it's going, because right now, it, you know, it, we approve this and the next amendment, it just sits on one, you know, one property, not the corridor. And I was wondering if, if, you know, if, can, can I get some clarification on, on that?
I think the, during the initial discussion, we were talking about how this would fit in terms of the desires of the innovation, Tampa Innovation Partnership. So, it was a larger context. So, we are doing a study that is a land use study along the corridor, which is Fowler Avenue. And so, our expectations in the near future, we're going to go in February to the landowners and, and take some more findings. But the recommendations from that report are centering around recommendations for the Fowler Corridor, based on the existing conditions that are out there. So, they're, they're, they're looking at joint recommendations to changes in the comp plan that would recognize this as a specialty area in the comp plan that then would open the door for the three jurisdictions to come in and to come up with an overall kind of development and design component for the, this area as it relates to all three of the jurisdictions, City of Tampa, Terrace, City of Tampa and Hillsborough County. So, there's, there's where I think that's the context of the innovation corridor. In terms of the roadways that it would apply within the half a mile, again, we're referring to the functional classification map and what's on there that would be defined under the major corridors. And so, if you, if, if you look at those, we, you can pretty well tell that there are basically arterials and collectors. The half-mile radius would be along Nebraska and along Sinclair Hills, just north of Barris Avenue, to the extent of, of the county's boundary on the east side. So, I, I hope that helps.
Well, you know, again, maybe this, maybe this is an issue I could take up with staff, but, but, and, and it's not so much related to the, the amendment itself, but there's some other issues that I was just, like I say, trying to, trying to understand better with this new land use classification. You know, how does that affect the area in general going forward?
Yeah, I think our hope is that as Pedro completes the Fowler Avenue study, that this, and the applicant was very willing to work with staff on the drafting of this, so that it would be something that potentially could meet our needs in terms of that future land use vision for that corridor. I could see, we've had other amendments in the university area along, specifically along Bruce B. Downs, that have gone to the regional mixed use 35 in recent years. So, we wanted, it was, it's our encouragement that they crafted something that could be hopefully versatile enough to be utilized after that study concludes or for other applicants, you know, in close proximity to the university along these major corridors.
Okay. Yeah, I think I, I understand, I understand that, but, you know, when I, when I first read this, I saw a mile and a half, well, mile and a half from the northwest corner of the university, the southeast corner of the university. I mean, that takes us into Temple Terrace. And so, you know, and again, maybe, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll hold my comments.
The last thing I would say is simply that I think the Fowler Avenue study, as it concludes in a couple of months after Pedro's had an opportunity to wrap up discussions with the other jurisdictions and the landowners, we'll have a better sense of the applicability of where we think amendments should be initiated to other properties for the similar corridor. And it may be that then we're coming back and tweaking the applicability of this category. But at where we are right now, this was, seemed like the most versatile approach to be able to address the future possibilities.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll, I'll get with you later and discuss it further.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question's probably a lot simpler and a lot more direct, probably a little, little bit more blunt, knowing me here. But it seems to me, and I could be misunderstanding this, maybe you guys can clarify for me, but it seems like we're creating this new plan category to allow residential acreage to be counted in the FAR, thereby making a property more appealing to a potential developer. Is that kind of the gist? Is that why we aren't using an RMU 35 and we need a new plan category?
Yeah, essentially, we had this discussion with staff and our first approach was, well, we have RMU 35, does RMU 35 work? And what we discussed with staff is, is, well, we didn't want to necessarily make this so broad a category and make this change that allows, let's say, a text change, to allow all county plan categories to count FAR for residential. So, we said, only in the context of this new category would we have this ability to use FAR for residential density purposes. For the main reason is, is that, as I stated a little bit earlier and answered one of the other questions, is the residential density calculation eats up land. And if you're going to have a live, work, play, high-intensity environment for R and D and on all the things that are envisioned here, really needed to have that ability to incorporate on FAR basis, the residential component. And essentially, that's what it is. Also, the only other addition in here, we wanted to clarify, which wasn't so clear, the ability for hospitals and biomedical research and those types of activities to be specifically and clearly identified in this new category.
Those are the only other two areas that I didn't notice. But building on that, what you're saying confirmed what I was thinking. You know, these things, precedents often make me take a step back, you know, and it makes me kind of a little worried to say that, okay, well, I am constantly down in the university area, full supporter of the university area, definitely think there's areas that need special things done. But to just kind of pull back and say, okay, well, the university, you know, the, the university mall area gets this kind of residential bonus, if you will, but no one else gets it, seems, it makes me a little uneasy. You know what I mean? It makes me kind of take a step back and say, well, well, maybe there are other places that might want to use it, you know? And instead of saying, well, how, well, how would they deal with incorporating these little things? For us, as not the applicant, we have to consider these things in the future. So, I don't, I don't know that it's, you know, that this is the right way, making a whole new plan category for the university mall, to go about achieving, making it look better for developers. I think there might be better ways to do it. And on a personal level, that's why I can't really support this. Maybe you guys can make me feel differently about that or something. You've obviously talked about this, so there's some reason that, that pushed this forward, you know?
Thank you. No, I'd be happy to answer any, any, you know, more details that I can provide. I think the, the thing to, to look at is, the way we look at, at the redevelopment of the university mall is, is not in a singular fashion. We're looking at the region. We're looking even at, from a state level, we're certainly, certainly looking at the, the medical district you have, which by some accounts may be the largest, most significant medical district in the state of Florida. That's really, really critical. I know the university is, gets a lot of attention and it's very, very important. But the medical district here is something that has gotten overlooked in, in a way, because no one really seems to really give it its due in terms of what has been going on there. It's been happening in large part because of the university, because the university has been doing what it's been doing over the last three, four, or five decades. But what we're trying to create, we're trying to give ourselves enough room to create what we're seeing in Boston, in San Jose, in Austin, in Seattle. And what we're seeing is, we're seeing urban right at the center of this. And urban meaning like really good, okay? Urban's a good thing. Sometimes we look, I think, in Florida and see urban and we don't see it as a good thing. But in terms of scientific and technology, research and development, and the, the players that are involved in it today and the generations that are coming online, and that's, and, you know, not just the young, I'm talking about the ones who are sort of finishing their careers too. They're coming together, those, those generations, young and the, the frontline that has been the experienced scientific researchers and inventors, they are coming to this point of urban because it's, it's an ability to tighten up and to collaborate and converge. It's not suburban office parks, I'm telling you, for science and technology, they're dead. Okay? They're dead. Because that group of innovators, they want to be together. The engineers want to be together with the medical professions and all the way down the line. So, we're trying to create enough flexibility and capacity. And mainly, capacity is important because when we're trying to go nationally and bring players here, they may come in for 100,000, but they need to know that we're in for a million, that we can support their long-term sustained development at that 100-acre site. So, we have to show capacity. And that capacity for us is density. But density is only part of the equation. We have to create these mixes of uses, and part of them are residential, because these people want to live there as well as work and play. It's, we're seeing development at a scale and in a, a shape and form we've never seen before. That's what we're trying to prepare for, for this site. And we think if we do this here, it will pour down Fowler Avenue to 275, to now we've moved our medical district, we've enlarged, expanded our medical district to downtown and waterfront. We haven't moved it, we've brought it in to the, to the, the medical district, which to, to this point, has only been up there, really, in terms of research.
Let me, let me ask this a different way, because I can tell I'm putting some onus on the applicant here and I want to put onus on staff. Let me ask this a different way. Why isn't everybody else, why is this residential kind of counting towards the FAR not able to be applied to all our other planning categories? Why can't we just allow it in all the other ones? Like RMU 35, why can't that happen?
So, the, that was the original direction that the applicant actually came in to us with. And we had concerns about that because the RMU 35 applies in some other areas, in Brandon, in other parts of the community, that we felt it would take additional study to make sure that that was compatible with. The, we felt comfortable with this area because in the city of Tampa, it's allowed. Their community mixed use 35, I believe, on the other part of the, well, really, the frontage of Fowler and south of Fowler. And that land use category already allows it. So, there, but until, it may very well be that this approach is very workable in Brandon and in some of the. and in some of the other areas where we want to see and encourage redevelopment, but our advice to the applicant was, you're opening up something that is found countywide, and we're going to have to do analysis on every piece of property that has RMU 35. It's not generally our direction to encourage an applicant to create a new land use category, because that's a whole lot of work for us, and we've got to find another color on the map, all of that sort of stuff. We're running out of colors. So, I mean, it, it's not that, that level of detail is, but because we also, so for two reasons. One was, we were opening up a countywide land use category, and there would have to have been a considerable amount of analysis into making sure that that was okay in all the other sites where RMU 35 applies. The second reason was, we were in the midst of this Fowler Avenue corridor study, and all along through this corridor study, we have been envisioning that we would be coming up with one land use vision for that entire corridor that would apply both in the city and in the county, and that instead of having somebody's property divided by CMU 35 and whether it's UMU or RMU or ICMU, it would all be ICMU, and that we would ultimately be coming up with something that we would then amend the city of Tampa's plan and the county's plan to have a common land use category. So, again, because the applicant was a, a willing partner in this case, they were willing to go in this direction that we thought would meet our needs down the line for the conclusion of that study. It's a, it's a little premature because the study's not concluded, but the applicant had market reasons that they wanted to move forward at this time.
All right. Tony, I saw you come in the room. You have something to say. You usually speak to me in a clearer way, so I hear what you have to say.
Thank you, sir. Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. Just to add a few more comments in addition to what Ms. Arndt has already presented to you, and also what Pedro has spoken to you about, and David Smith. 66% of all the employment in Hillsborough County is concentrated in three areas, the university area, West Shore, and the downtown. Two of those, two out of those three are located in the city of Tampa. We have land use categories that can support those. We actually have no cap in the downtown core. So, the central business district, I used to call it when I used to do presentations, the sky's the limit, which was really, the only thing that restricted it was FAA height, because we're close to Peter O'Nite Airport down in Davis Island. So, so you have, and it's been proven that that's definitely an attractor, as we can see by the development that's going on with Water Street and the Heights Project and all those things that have been happening in the downtown core. Also, if you've been checking out, West Shore has been booming. West Shore, most of the land use categories in West Shore are either urban mixed-use 60 or regional mixed-use 100, which have much greater FARs and density potentials and bonuses than what you have in the county. The county, unfortunately, I will have to say, the university area has been the redheaded stepchild of the three districts. This is an opportunity to provide the latitude and to provide the impetus that's needed for the next step for the university area. I know that the university itself has been very frustrated and possibly not having the attention that it feels should be provided to it over the years, that it has been a great asset, economic asset, to Hillsborough County. I think partnering and coming down and having a major presence with, with the new medical structure that's being built in the, in the Water Street area is very beneficial, but that is the same thing that you already have that exists now in the university area. But now what needs to be added to that from a land use and transportation perspective is a new category, because as Ms. Arndt has already stated to you, we looked at the RMU 35 and trying to change that, but that was going from 83 acres to now we're having to look at over 1,000 acres, part of which is in the Brandon Town Center area, which is not, it, it's shaking pretty good, but it's not a major employment center. As I said before, 66% of all the growth is in the university area as far as job employment potential and existing, the university area, the downtown core, and West Shore. So, we've come up with this through the collaboration with, and the county was involved in it too, Development Services, and in listening to the possible options. And we felt that this was the best course of action. This is the first step. This is the toe in the pool to really see if this is going to be able to move forward in the university area and really catch on. If it does, we have on the heels of this, the Fowler corridor study that Pedro is working on, and from that point forward, then we can see how we might be able to maximize the use of this new novel category that's going to benefit and incorporate Hillsborough County. Temple Terrace really doesn't need to take advantage of anything similar to that. This is not something that needs to be in Ruskin. This is not something that needs to be in Gibsonton. It's a different vibe and it's a different need down there. So, those areas really are not, this is not really what's needed there. It's really needed for this area specific, which is why staff's got a pretty good comfort level with moving forward on what we've come up with through this collaborative process.
That is kind of a change in future, maybe, depending, like you say, on how it works out, and that's kind of the seven things you were talking about. I don't know, it still, still feels a little like spot zoning to me, so I don't know. I don't know, does anybody have any other questions?
That's a big, that's a big spot.
Yeah, it is, it is. And it's not, you know, I want to say that I'm, again, in support of everything you guys are doing out there on the university area, full support. It's just, there's bigger things that, that, that kind of weigh on me in these things, so.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Joseph's observations were, were exactly like mine initially, but as I read through this, and I think I've got a much better understanding of, of, of what's, what's, you know, what this comp plan amendment is trying to do, the, the, the conditions it's trying to establish in this area. So, I, I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that, but I do want to, I do want to go on the record and thank staff for working so hard to generate this, the text for this, you know, for this new land use category. I'm pretty sure it was a, you know, a pretty Herculean effort, especially if Mr. Garcia was involved, but, 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 you know, based on, based on what we've heard here to, to this evening, and, and I think the, the importance that, that this, even though it might not be perfect just yet, the importance of what this comp plan amendment suggests, Mr. Chairman, I'd be, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Green? Yeah, let, let me let Commissioner Willman?
Yeah.
Turn your mic, please.
Sorry. Do I have an answer on the question about the should or shall?
Yes, Vin Marketti for the applicant, I was showing Pager this as well. We're willing to change the language that's actually staff developed, but we'll change it. Developments shall include elements of mixed use.
Okay. Thank you. And I do have one more question. Since the, okay, so in the last, no, the third, well, after the bullets on that column with the specific intent of category, retail commercial uses shall be clustered at arterial and collector intersections or integrated as part of a mixed-use campus or mall. Because we're talking about this could apply to any site, right? Could that, and it sounds like that language is based on the university mall site, would it make sense then to change that from a mixed-use campus or mall to the development? To make it more generic?
David Smith, again, for the applicant. The, while this category is developed with the redevelopment of the mall in mind as the first element of this, assuming we approve the companion amendment to actually place it on the property, it's not intended to just be in a mall. What we're trying to do there, the current RMU category has this condition in it, and what it's trying to do is say, well, we just don't want you to come and have strip commercial, come in and get this category, put all this FAR and have a little strip project with commercial. It's if you're going to have primarily a retail project, that the project should be at an intersection or should be part and integrated of a clustered mall operation. We weren't making that to say university mall, but it was, the language originally was the way, you know, in the RMU, was that it should be integrated or, we've already got the situation, right? We already have entitlements for retail on our project, but anybody else that came in, if they were, you know, halfway down Bruce B. Downs and wanted to put a big retail component with a small little piece of mixed use, that's really not the intent of the project. The, the intent of this category is to develop mixed-use projects, and if you want to have primarily a retail project, that at least you've got to be in an intersection or you have to be a bigger project.
That's not my question. That wasn't my question. My question was just, instead of saying it has to be integrated as part of a mixed-use campus or mall, could it just say that it has to be integrated as part of the development? Because it's confusing.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I got you. I thought you were saying the development, our development. I'm sorry.
The development, just in general terms, because the way it's worded now, it's, makes it seem like this is geared towards the mall.
Yeah, that, that's fine. Sorry for the misunderstanding.
Okay.
Commissioner Marina?
Oh, sorry. No, go ahead. Just to, to make a comment, my, I, I went back through previously the last meeting, and my concerns with it were, you know, could something like this be applied to other university campuses in, in Hillsborough County? And, you know, I, I think I've increased my understanding of, of how this works. The, the one thing I want to add, at least in terms of my own sort of personal experience in, in reading through the staff summary and hearing what you're saying, having a biomedical campus, having a residential component, having a commercial component, having a retail component, the thing that I started thinking about was Innovation Square in Gainesville, Florida, which took an old hospital and redeveloped an entire neighborhood around it. In St. Louis, the area around Washington University, that's a TOD element, and it incorporated university, incorporated gallery, incorporated existing neighborhood. I think the gentleman earlier mentioned Boston, you know, I've, I've traveled through before. It'd be nice to have something like this in Tampa, and if something like what is being proposed here can advance that, that point where you could have sort of this all-in-one encompassing community, I think that's a good thing, and I'd be in, in, in favor of the, of the text amendment as proposed. The last thing I want to add too is, I previously worked for the city council member who represented this part of Tampa, Terrace Park and University Square neighborhood, and that area is in a dire new redevelopment. The single-family residential component started in part because of the university being there back in the 50s and 60s. You had defense and industry that is still there in, in some respects, and to, you know, in modern times, biomedical and research and technology is, is sort of our manufacturing. So, I'd be in favor of the H-1821 as proposed.
Commissioner Dix?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a absolutely terrific proposal, and it will have the potential to put Tampa and Hillsborough County on the map and for us to grow in ways that will attract great new industry and technology innovation and, and all kinds of, of good industry. So, I'm highly in favor of it, but as I understand it, we, we, we talked backwards and forwards about this should and shall, and I don't know if you accept the motion that says to change it to should, but I am vehemently opposed to that.
There, there is not a motion on the floor right now.
Okay. And, and I will put it in the form of a motion to, to find this consistent as staff has, has written it, but, you know, to, to, you know, to change this now to, from, from, you know, it should have something to shall have something, I mean, that makes it mandatory. And you may have smaller projects down the road that it becomes too onerous of a task. So, while I understand the intention is honorable to say, you know, that it shall have it, I just can't see putting that into the text amendment itself. So, I don't know if you're ready for an amendment, I mean, ready for a motion, but I'm ready to submit one if you're ready to accept it.
Any other questions? Commissioner Green, did you have something else to say, or?
Ready to make a motion?
Okay. I don't know who, I, I'm going to go back to Commissioner Green.
That's fine.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A move for a finding of Hillsborough County Comp Plan Amendment 18-21, the text amendment to add the new future land use category, innovation corridor, mixed-use 35, consistent with the future land use element, I'm sorry, with the comprehensive plan of Hillsborough County.
Okay. Got a motion?
I second that.
Got a second? Now, let me ask, does that include, let me ask, does that include Commissioner Willman's changes or any of the changes?
No, it's just as, as it is, as it is.
Which was my understanding and why I seconded.
Okay. As stated.
Right.
Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Willman?
Can I make a motion? How does it work?
Well, we have to vote on this.
She could make an amendment.
She can make an amendment. See if it'll accept it. Yeah, offer an amendment and see if it'll accept it. Otherwise, we're going to have to vote on this, and then if it fails, then you can make a motion.
I'd like to offer an amendment that would add language in three parts of the table relating to Objective 19, that the classification will still require two or more land uses. The second is where it identifies the major corridors as those being on the locally, local functional classification map. And then the third was the development should reflect what the applicant agreed to amend that as. Do you have a note of that, Pedro?
Yes. I've recorded all three, and you're dropping the requirement that development shall include, okay.
Yeah, right. So, that was just a, but what, I'm sorry, could you, could you remind us what that development should reflect?
Typical use, okay. Under typical uses, we would add, would still require two or more uses. Under specific intent, we would add a reference to the functional classification map in the future land use element, and further down, we would change mixed-use campus or mall or combination of to read as part of the development.
And there's, sorry, there is a fourth. Just instead of saying a mixed-use campus or mall, change that to the development.
Yes, that was the one I just said.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Is that accepted as a friendly amendment to that motion? Commissioner Green?
Am I supposed to make that decision?
Well, and, and we could ask staff and the applicant if that changes anything.
Oh.
Yeah. Because otherwise, we're going to be voting on your motion, and if your motion fails, then she can make her own motion. But at this point in time, your motion's on the floor. So, you can either accept it, and it would be...
Okay, now, now, you said...
You can, if you, if you don't accept what she's proposing, your motion, we're going to vote on your motion. If you accept it, then we'll vote on the amended motion, which includes, and he, and his second too, and his second too. Yeah.
Okay. Then, no, I'd like to vote on the motion as, as stated.
Okay. Any further, any?
I had only one out, just under...
Yep.
Commissioner, if there is a second to her amendment, then we would procedurally vote on the amendment before we proceed.
Right.
And, and no offense, but I'm not seconding it.
Okay. So, is there a second on the amended motion?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I'll, I'll second. I thought it were very reasonable requests, and the applicant agreed.
Okay. So, now, any discussion on the amended motion?
Well, this is an amendment to the...
The amendment to the motion, and I may have to refer, we good?
Well, Mr. Chairman, as far as discussion, I, again, I want to point out that the amendments by the commissioner are certainly honorable. I have no question about that, but I, I just really strongly believe that, that this can be something wonderful to happen for our community, and I don't want to make it too onerous for any smaller parcels down the road to have to jump through too many hurdles in order to qualify.
Okay. Commissioner Marina?
I would want to hear from the applicant to make sure that the, the amendment...
Suggested amendment.
Is, is...
The suggested amendment.
Is, the suggested amendment is in line with what your intention is.
Yes, thank you. Vin Marketti again, representing the applicant. I verified with the client that all four changes are acceptable. They're minor, very minor changes in terms of the applicant's property, three, well, I think there were four total.
Three.
Oh, you dropped the shot?
Yeah.
I didn't understand that, so.
I dropped this.
Either way, we're, we're fine with the three or four.
Okay.
I mean, candidly, it's, it's, it'll have, it'll have really no effect at all on my client's property. As Mr. Dix said, however, it might have some impact on some... As Mr. Dix said, however, it might have some impact on some other properties that we're not aware of. So I would just kind of caution you on that element. But other than that, we're fine with it, as the applicant.
Okay. I'm going to have to ask Mr., our attorney, Mr. Robin. Are we, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the Robert's rules. Are we voting on this amended motion, whether we're going to accept it? And then, because we've got a motion and a second for the amended motion. So right now...
Just the amendment.
Yeah, just the amendment, whether to add those four things.
Yep. So we're voting on that right now. Any further discussion on voting on the amendment? Oh, Commissioner Powell?
I just have a question for county staff. I know the applicant is okay with it, but, I mean, how does county staff feel about the amendments and, you know, whether we should do that or not, if it's going to harm, you know, for, you know, future development?
As staff, I don't see that it will do that. I think it, the changes, so long as the applicant are okay with it, are in line with what our discussion has been. Okay. So, Commissioner Marina?
So to follow up, then, is there potential for a smaller, is, does this, does the amended, does the amendment become onerous for a smaller developer? Or potentially?
I think the clarification, or that was made by Mr. Marketti, which I think is correct. There is no, this does not impact the property that they will be applying for. It will potentially impact those that are of...
For two...
Smaller.
Smaller parcels.
That's my question.
Okay.
So we have, we have no position on that. We're just stating the fact.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Green? Question?
No.
Okay. So I want to just make absolutely soon, I'm going to ask our attorney. Right now, we are voting on Commissioner Willman's amended motion. Is that correct?
Amendment.
Motion to amend. And then, once we approve that, then we'll be voting on the actual amended motion, or the, okay, if it's approved. Okay. Any further comment before we vote? To approve this amended motion? All in favor of approving the amendment to the motion, please say aye. Okay. Actually, can you, all in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, we got Commissioner Willman and Commissioner Crest. Two in favor, all opposed, please raise your hand. So it feels two to eight. Commissioner Willman and Commissioner Crest were in favor of the amended motion. The others were not. Now, we go back to the original motion. Okay? And that is the motion that Commissioner Green made.
To find it consistent.
To find it consistent as stated.
As stated.
Yep, as stated. Okay. All in favor of Commissioner Green's motion, well, let me ask, any further discussion before we, all in favor of Commissioner Green's motion as stated, as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So motion passes eight to two, with Commissioner Willman and Commissioner Joseph opposed. Okay? Thank you. We will move on to Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-22. Pedro Par, Planning Commission staff, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1822, a future land use map amendment on the north side of East Fowler Avenue and North 19th Street, is a proposed change from Residential 20, Office Commercial 20, and Urban Mixed Use 20, to the Innovation Corridor Mixed Use 35 plan category that was part of the last So again, this site is approximately 83 acres. It is, the majority of it is the university mall. We will show on the maps a piece that was left out, but it is inside the urban service area. It is adjacent to the University of South Florida main campus area, and it is identified in the comprehensive plan as an area related to, adjacent to the Regional Activity Center. It is in, it is identified in the transit envelope map, and it is part of the university area community plan. So if you look at your map and follow my pointer, again, here is the, here is the, here is the site of the plan amendment on the university mall. The university community plan is basically on the north side, Barris Avenue, out to 46th Street on the west, following Fletcher Avenue to 30th Street or Bruce B. Downs, and then along Fowler Avenue and along Nebraska. It also includes those areas that are found between the city limits of the city of Tampa and Temple Terrace, as you see them outlined The, I'm just going to walk through the aerials. We're all familiar with where we're at. So if we start out up on the Florida Hospital, again, this is the University of South Florida and its medical facilities and research facilities and educational facilities, the Veterans Hospital, and then it is surrounded by mixed-use residential and some single-family residential, and again, residential and commercial, retail, along the corridor itself. And it is adjacent to the city limit boundaries, which flows along Fowler Avenue, along 30th, and then along Fletcher Avenue. Here is a close-up, and again, here is the city limit for the city of Tampa, running along Bruce B. Downs and Fowler Avenue. At the last meeting, one of the questions raised was how, how is this plan amendment related in relation to the existing CFX? So if you look at your aerial map, the orange line is where the CSX Railroad currently exists, along, on the east side of Nebraska, and then south of Fowler Avenue to McKinley Road. So part of the plan category calls for looking at development that occurs where this plan category is placed, adjacent to transit lines and adjacent to the fixed transit guideway system. So from the future land use element, here is the transit envelope map. And in orange, you can see the area that is part of the plan amendment site, adjacent and including part of it. And then, in the MPA's 2040 Cost Affordable Capacity Improvements project map, the transit, the fixed guideway transit corridor is still identified, is still part of that plan, and it is the yellow and red dotted line that you see here. We had talked about what would a half-mile radius look like. So would it sit from the center, from the edge, and what, the way we mapped it was to take a half-mile from anywhere along the USF main campus boundary. And you can see it flows out to Nebraska, and then curves in and flows along Sinclair Hills, north of Barris Avenue. Again, what we're showing is also the areas that are, those pieces that are, are between the city of Tampa and Temple Terrace. And so those are the pieces that would be within a half-mile. Yes. Yeah.
One and a half mile.
One and a half mile, I'm sorry. One and a half mile. Thank you. The future, here is adopted future land use map adjacent to this site. Again, are the Residential Six plan category, the Residential 20, the Urban Mixed Use 20 as it exists today, and the Office Commercial 20, and Regional Mixed Use 35. In the city of Tampa, we have suburban mixed use that is on the campus for University of South Florida. And then we have Community Commercial 35, adjacent to Fowler Avenue. And here in the corner, we have a light industrial, I'm sorry, a heavy industrial plan category. The proposed future land use change would change the amendment site to the Innovation Corridor Mixed Use. And again, you can see a portion of the university mall would remain Residential 20 and the Urban Mixed Use 20. The impacts of this plan amendment would be, the existing potential for residential development is about 1,600 units. The potential would be about 2,900 units. The existing square footage would be about 3 million square feet, and the maximum under the new plan category would be about 7 million square feet. So again, staff reviewed the plan amendment and found it consistent with the future land use elements, sections that dealt with the urban service area, Policy 114, related to compatibility of development, the community development and land use policies 16.2, 3, 10, and 13. Again, they're talking about the transition of intensities, the integration of adjacent land uses and the development along transit lines, also the Regional Activity Center policy and the fixed guideway transit policy, the Regional Activity Center policy 40, and the fixed guideway transit policy 54.1. In the transportation element, Objective 1.5, and Policy 2.1, 1.6, which again, deal with the adjacency to multimodal and to transit corridors. And in the livable communities element to the university area community plan, it is consistent, and it's consistent with Goal 2, which talks about eliminating obsolete land uses within the community and supporting under Goal 5, economic development. There were no objections from the reviewing agencies, and staff recommends that Plan Amendment, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1820, to be found consistent with the goals, objection policy, future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you. Again, Vin Marketti for the record, 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2100 Tampa, representing the applicant, R D management, who's the owner of the 83-acre site in question. I'm going to have, Chris Bowen has already spoken, obviously, to the project itself. I want to try to incorporate, save a little bit of time, his comments and testimony into the record for this 1822 hearing, if you wouldn't mind that. If that's acceptable, I want to have just David Smith speak about consistency and compatibility to the new plan category that we're seeking. Again, the ICMU 35. Okay?
Good evening, David Smith, 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2100, for the applicant. I think there's been substantial discussion regarding the concept that we're dealing with here, and why we're trying to focus this new category on this particular piece of property. It's a unique opportunity. Around this property now, we have, as many of the commissioners know, a very heavy multifamily component, not necessarily in the best of conditions, and hopefully incentives and job and employment opportunities in the activity here will, will start creating a very centrist approach to trying to impact the entire area with opportunities. But keeping that in mind, this category also provides for a transition to those communities because we have two large lakes to our north. And those are most, most abutting portions of the property. Those are owned by the county, so they provide a natural buffer to the large multifamily tracts that are to our north. And immediately to our north is the University Retirement Center, that is getting back on its feet, getting more active and stabilized. And so that is a high-density, high-rise element that provides an easy transition into the subject property. Moving to our west, those are some redevelopment opportunities. There's some small multifamily projects that are located immediately to our west. There's the bizarre property, which used to be a sports authority. There's some pharmacy operations, and basically a commercial corridor running all the way out to the interstate. So from a compatibility standpoint, we're well positioned to provide a sensitive development, but even, but a very urban development to our neighbors. To our west, we have commercial development. We have a recently approved student housing project at high density, which actually has the new, the old category, RMU 35, on the property, and some existing commercial that is actually being utilized for medical purposes. Tower emerging has its women's center immediately located across the street. Used to be a movie theater, and they've adaptively reused that, that site. So we see this as being a very appropriate location for this, a very unique opportunity, given the fact that we control so much acreage in the area, and find this to be very consistent with the goals and visions of not only the university area community plan, but the vision for the, you know, the research and R and D opportunities in the Activity Center in Hillsborough County. It's getting late. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I think staff did a very good job in their analysis of the project.
Okay.
Oops. Just to wrap up, Vin Marketti again for the record. I would ask that since you, Planning Commission 82, adopted the plan category, that you look at this property based upon the plan category already adopted by the planning commission on its vote tonight, and not, not look at it as the amendment to the amendment previously discussed, but look at it as a basis of the property, does the property qualifies as consistent with the plan category that you just adopted? Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Please step forward. State your name and address.
Karen Mahoski, 7903 West Whitewater Court. I think this is a great development opportunity for the university area. As we know, the university mall's been struggling. My concerns you as commissioners, when you go back to your regular jobs, who you're being appointed by, and your position here on this commission is to, this is going to bring, as both Commissioner Joseph and Commissioner Green and Commissioner, one, two, three, Dix, sorry, I'm trying to count, stated, this is going to be, bring a revitalization to the area. But that surrounding area north is a very low-income rented community. And as this develops, you're going to then increase rent. And how is this going to be impacting them in the future? Yes, we all want redevelopment. But in the future, when you are in your workshops, when you are, you know, developing your maps, take that into consideration of how the surrounding community is going to be affected. And what can you do individually, when you go back to your, to your positions, and then also on this commission, how can you help those communities who can't be here to speak, who can't be here to, you know, they don't have the opportunities? Hopefully, this is going to bring, you know, other jobs they will be able to have, but as we go through, this is something. The other is, you know, this is one of the roads is very dangerous, so I hope that the applicant, which I know probably, you know, will be doing this, is to make it a safe community, so that, you know, if there's going to be children, everything is going to be safe, especially with Fowler. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any other public, public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Dix?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, one, if you don't mind, to the staff. I was wondering about this over the weekend. You know, there's a little, there's, on the northeastern portion of the property, there's a big portion that's kind of carved out. It looks like an island, but I know it's not contiguous all the way around. I'm presuming that the applicant doesn't own that, and that's why it wasn't included?
Yes, the applicant owned the properties identified in the plan amendment.
Okay. And of course, I, my comment to the staff always is, I mean, if we see something like that, you know, that is so adjacent, so logical, why we don't ever reach out to them and propose to them that we have a staff-initiated map amendment still befuddles me.
Well, I think that's something that we strive to do and have looked at in a number of other circumstances. In this case, because, again, the Fowler Avenue study was operating sort of concurrent with this, I think we saw that that would be the vehicle to address that in the future.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to Pedro. I don't think I said it on the last one. I know this, again, echoing Commissioner Green. This probably took a lot of work. And although I wasn't in support of the new land use category, we have a new land use category, and I think it would be great for the university mall area. So I will be supporting this one.
Commissioner Willman?
Thank you. While we adopted, we, while we made a motion to support the new land use category, it hasn't been adopted yet. So while I do support redevelopment of the university mall, I don't think my vote should be counted on based, is it consistent with this language, because it's not adopted language yet. And... And, you know, I just want to state that the, you know, the East Fowler land use study hasn't been completed yet. I hope that policies are going to come out of this that will relate to this innovation corridor mixed-use district. I just hope that additional work is done to make sure that all of this comes together in a, in a very coordinated fashion, and, you know, I do support University Mall redevelopment, so I'll just leave it like that.
Commissioner Doughty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, it's not directly related to what it is that we got to do, but I do have a comment, question, suggestion, basically. Ven, Ron, and David, you all know I'm a stormwater engineer in my, in my day job, and the ponds that are just to the north of you are Duck Pond. I'm sure you're aware that the county and the city spent twenty million bucks about five years ago to solve the flooding problems within this watershed. So, I mean, I would suggest you own eighty-three acres of pavement, that you, in your development, that you reduce the amount of impervious area, try to put something into your development that improves water quality discharge, and I'm not really sure what your timing of things are, but if things go through, I imagine in about a year, eighteen months, the Duck Pond watershed is currently undergoing an update, and there will be some BMPs that are suggested, and if there's some possibility that something could be worked out to where your development benefits the watershed, that would get you some significant mileage, I think. That's just comment and suggestion, that's it.
Okay. Any additional questions? Someone like to make a motion? Mr. Green?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to move that we find Hillsborough County Comp. Plan Amendment eighteen dash twenty-two, future land use map, map amendment, north side of East Fowler Avenue, east of Nineteenth Street, consistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Wilds. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So nine, nine in favor of it, Commissioner Willman is opposed, so motion passes. Nine to one. Thank you. Okay. Next up is Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment eighteen dash twenty-three.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jenica Mills, I am here to present HCCPA eighteen twenty-three. This amendment is being brought before you this evening at the direction of the Board of County Commission. Planning Commission staff was directed to develop policies to prohibit the fill and development of submerged lands. So a series of meetings took place between county staff, planning commission staff, as well as the Environmental Protection Commission, as well as the Port Authority. We collaborated and came up with the language that you all see before you this evening. New policy language will be added to the future land use element, which speaks to new land use designations and changes to existing land use designations that are on surface waters and that they are to be limited to natural preservation land use classification only. From this new language will also be added to the coastal management element. This language will speak to the filling of surface waters and that they can only take place for the purpose of incidental fill and for the purpose of public health, safety, and welfare. New language will also be added to the conservation and aquifer recharge element, which will speak to the protection as well as conservation of surface waters. As well, there will be two definitions added to the definition section of the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for incidental fill as well as surface waters. In reviewing the proposed text amendment, the proposed text amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies. Within the future land use element currently, objective thirteen, and within the coastal management element, objective two and policy two-point-one speak to not adversely impacting significant natural systems and the protection of wetlands. The proposed text amendment is also consistent with coastal management element, policy two-point-seven and two-point-nine, currently speaking to the prohibition of development of submerged I am now going to introduce Sean College to you all. He has been working with the Board of County Commissioners on a little tweak to the language, so I'm going to have Sean come up here and speak to the tweak that's for the new language.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sean College, Planning Commission staff. When we workshopped the language that senior packet with the Board of County Commissioners, Board of County Commissioner Kemp had a suggestion, a small subtle change to the language. That was placed in front of your desks. It's a single page of the language, and it should, I have extras if you need one. It should have one small yellow highlight. It's a subtle change, but the provision there in yellow that talked about uses pursuant to the Portmaster Plan, that occurred slightly later in that same statement as a list, and she proposed to move that up to the front. It's a little bit of a subtle change. Planning Commission staff reviewed that. It appears to clarify the interpretation of the provision, and I think aids in its readability. Planning Commission staff would recommend that you find both versions consistent with the county plan, but we would recommend, if it's your pleasure, that you endorse and recommend to the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Kemp's version of the, of the plan amendment. And with that, that concludes our presentation.
Public comment on this item?
Karen Mohasky, seven nine zero three, West Whitewater Court, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero seven. I think this is great that we are defending our submerged lands, who would think somebody would want to fill in and make, make water land. So this is a great public initiative brought by the Board of Commissioners, and I think that we definitely need to protect our surface waters as well as the waterway. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any questions from commissioners?
I have one.
Commissioner Dix?
Mr. College, for the life of me, I can't understand any logical reason for that change. And all due respect to the commissioner, I mean, it makes no logical sense to me, and it would make more logical sense for us to find consistency with the text amendment that was advertised and on, advertised to the public, and then if the commissioner has a logical reason for switching the verbiage from one to the other, then she certainly has that prerogative to bring it before the county commission, when this will actually be voted upon for approval by the county commission.
Right. At the workshop with the Board of County Commissioners, this was presented publicly by Commissioner Kemp, and at that point, they're, what they decided was that, yes, both versions would come back to them, of course, and, but now it's at the point where the Planning Commission needs to advise the Board of County Commissioners, so that's where we are.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, like to make a motion, if you're ready for one.
Hold on a second. We still have some questions, discussion here, so if you can hold off. Commissioner Joseph?
Hi. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, I just wanted to make sure, and I'm sure that we did, that we had our attorney go through this wording, and it was kind of like the city did. I noticed the difference between the city and our version. I like our version a lot better, let me just say that. I think it's a lot more flexible and better for us. There's some things in the city one that, hmm, but that's another issue. So I just wanted to ask, make sure that we did have legal counsel in putting this.
I have not reviewed the change, and it's not customary to do that unless I'm asked to, so I normally do not get involved in the drafting of the plan amendment language.
Yeah, I don't think it would be you. It'd be like a county attorney, wouldn't it?
We did have county current.
No offense, Tracy. I love you guys.
Yes. There was many, many meetings with regard to the county's language as proposed, actually many more than we had when we worked on the city of Tampa's, and at all those meetings, there was counsel from the county there, as well as other staff, development services staff, the county staff, and so it was heavily coordinated with their legal department, and this is where we are.
Good job. Good job.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Marina?
Thank you. Just so, following up on our previous conversation, why wouldn't there be a date, you know, a sort of a, a go-no-go date, the way there was in the, in the city version of this?
It's not something that we, either the staffs, you know, the legal staffs of Tampa, the planning staff of Tampa, and also in the county, proposed. It was something at a workshop with the city council that one of the city council members proposed, and as it is their prerogative, it is their comprehensive plan, and that's where that got into the city of Tampa's.
The other thing I would mention is that the county's really only applies to surface waters and not the man-made water bodies that, right, Sean? This would not apply to borrow pits, for example, as it's drafted here. It just would apply to the surface waters of Tampa Bay and the rivers and tributaries.
That is another distinction, and the main reason for that is that the city of Tampa wants this to apply everywhere within the city, including the inland areas, which could deal with lakes and such. It is the direction of the county and understanding of the Board of County Commissioners, of what they're interested in, is they only wanted theirs to apply to coastal waters. So there is that distinction in the language.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Dix?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move that we find the proposed future land use element, coastal management element, conservation and aquifer recharge element, and the definition section in text amendments, HCCPA eighteen twenty-three, consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan, and forward it to the Board of County Commissioners, as proposed by the staff.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Dix, second by Commissioner Marina. Any further discussion? Commissioner Joseph?
Joseph.
Oh, Joseph, I'm sorry. A motion by Commissioner Dix and a second by Commissioner Joseph. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.[1755.82]